...regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission and we'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that your cellphones are turned off. Any final action taken on conditional use permit request will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by March 4th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on March 19th at 9:15 AM. Any final actions taken on the preliminary subdivision plan, rezoning, and text amendment applications tonight will be referred to the County Commission for a public hearing on March 19th at 9:15 AM. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. The first announcement I want to make is if you're here for item number nine, which was the land application of waste materials from John Morrell, that item has been withdrawn. John Morrell has decided not to pursue this in Minnehaha County. So if you're here for that item, you're free to stay, but you're sure welcome to leave as well. Then I'm going to, the Planning Commission is going to consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the January 28th meeting are included as part of the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members to any item listed on the consent agenda? None down here? Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda, and if any member of the audience objects to the item, you can raise your hand and we'll move that item to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. So I'm going to go down on the consent agenda here. Item number one is the approval of the January 28th meeting minutes. Item number two is a zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Section 3 and 26 of the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. Okay, item number three is a conditional use permit to allow the transfer of one residential building eligibility. This is a half a mile north of Hartford. Item number four, a conditional use permit to allow a dog kennel. This will be located two miles north of Brandon. You would like that moved?
I just asked you to move that out.
Okay, we'll move that to the regular agenda. Item number five is a conditional use permit to amend the previous conditional use permit for an existing trap shoot rifle and pistol range. Now, there is another rifle range on here later in the meeting. This one is for one that's located a mile and a half south of Humboldt. Is there any objections to this one? Okay, number six, a conditional use permit to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building area. This is located two miles east of the Midway Corner. And item number seven is a preliminary plan for Silver Creek Estates addition. This is located one mile north of Renner Corner. Okay, so at this time, I saw an objection to item number four. Is there any other item on here that anybody wanted moved? All right, if there's no objections, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, what we're going to do now is that those items, what am I supposed to do? Those items that I just discussed, with the exception of item number four, have all been approved. So if you were here for any of those items, you're free to leave. Does anybody have any questions about any of those items? All right. Then we're going to move on and I'll just let people get out, give them a minute to I just kind of want to tell you a little bit about how this process is going to work from here forward. A member of the staff will first give the report. The applicant and proponents will have 30 minutes to present their side. The opponents will follow with 30 minutes. Questions asked by the Planning Commission will not count against anyone's time. The applicants will be given 10 minutes for rebuttal. The floor will then be closed for public testimony. The Planning Commission will discuss the item. We can ask questions of anyone in the audience or anybody that spoke to the item, and then we're going to ask for a motion and we're going to vote, and a majority vote is required to pass any item. Anyone that speaks at the podium must state their name and their address for the record. For the rezoning item in Hartford, this item is required by state law to advance to the County Commission, and the public hearing for that will be on March 19th at 9:25 in this room. For the conditional use permits, which would be nine, which was withdrawn in 10, the decision made tonight by the Planning Commission may be appealed. A written appeal must be filed in the Planning Office by March 4th at 5:00 PM. If an appeal is filed, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on March 19th sometime after 9:00 AM. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this room. Okay, and we want to make sure everybody gets heard, so I don't want you to think that we don't want to hear you point. I just want sides to be aware that they might want to consolidate what they have to present, so we don't have multiple people coming up and presenting the same thing, just so you're prepared for that plan. Okay, none of us may else. Okay, all right. Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda with the addition of item number four?
Second.
You have a motion and second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay, then I think we can go ahead and get started.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, I'm representing the County Planning Department tonight, and this is a request, conditional use permit 13-14 to allow a dog kennel. The property is approximately two miles north of Brandon on the Renner Road, I suppose. I guess we call it 258th Street. The conditional use permit is to allow a dog boarding facility. The narrative provided by the applicant indicates that they plan on constructing a 30-foot by 60-foot building to accommodate approximately 25 dogs. The applicant provided a site plan which shows that there will be approximately five outdoor dog runs which will be constructed on the east side of the proposed building. The applicant did not indicate any hours of operation for the kennel. On February, oh, sorry, January 4th, no, sorry, February 4th of 2013, I conducted a staff site visit, and it appeared that the property is fairly well-isolated from the surrounding properties. The subject property is a rather large parcel of 40 acres, and the proposed kennel would be located near the south edge of that 40-acre parcel. The primary land use in the surrounding area is agriculture, and there are four residences and one church located to the northeast and northwest of the subject property. The closest residence is located, both, there are two of them, about 1,800 feet to the northwest and the northeast, and the church is located approximately 1,300 feet to the north. There are other residences also to the northeast and the northwest which are located more than 2,200 feet away. We evaluate conditional use permits and look at them for a number of items, and the first one would be what kind of effect this might have on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity, and what effect it would have on the uses already permitted and upon the property values in the area. Dog kennels do have an impact on surrounding property owners or surrounding properties. The primary use in this area is agriculture. However, single-family residences are allowed within the A1 agricultural district. The establishment of a dog boarding kennel could impact this use. However, it should be noted that the subject property is 40 acres, and the size of this existing lot really does aid in the buffering of any noise that might be associated with that. Secondly, what kind of effect is this going to have on the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant properties for the uses primarily in this area? As I indicated, the primary use in this area is agriculture, and the proposed use of the dog kennel should not greatly impact that land use for agriculture, other than potentially restricting residential development immediately to the south of the dog kennel. Number three, that utility access roads, drainage, and other facilities are provided. Majority of the utilities are already in place. The existing residence has water and sewer, and there's an existing driveway that comes
My neighbors' Haggins have cattle. If there would be any kind of training in that respect, and if it might down the road be construed to a breeding facility, as far as a dog breeding facility.
Staff, would he have to get it, would they have to get another, if they wanted to do training or dog breeding, this is for a dog boarding facility, right?
This is only for dog boarding, not for dog breeding facility or dog training, only boarding.
Okay. And then, I understand then that after 7 o'clock, the dogs would be all inside?
At daylight hours.
Okay, they're only allowed on the daylight hours outside?
Outside during daylight hours.
We have a situation in our area that we usually have a train that goes by at 10 o'clock at night, and when it sends out the whistle, we have a lot of coyotes that start howling, and so that might be some, you know, it's, when you have dogs, sometimes it's like, wow, what's going on? And I can see where that might kind of stir up the little extra excitement in the neighborhood.
I don't think it's ever still daylight at 10, is it?
No.
Apparently. You couldn't read.
Yeah, yeah.
We're looking forward to that, but I think that was our main concerns. We just didn't know how close to the church it was going to be, and we couldn't see from that information.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this item? All right. Do you guys object to the notification for funerals?
No, absolutely not, that's fine.
You don't have to come up, you can if you want to, though.
No, that's fine.
All right.
We'll work with you.
Okay. All right.
I'd move, as conditions are stated, I think they can work together on this. We don't have to put everything in writing.
Right.
I'll look for approval of the conditions.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Allen Henderson, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that has been approved. Now, we're going to go on to the rezoning.
Pat Herman with Minnehaha County Planning, and this is a request to rezone property from A1 agricultural to the Meadows Plan Development on the northwest edge of Hartford. And before we start, because I do know we have people in the audience, want to make sure that you have copies of what we received. I'm just going to read off what should be in front of you.
Can we hear okay back there?
Yeah, they can hear fine.
You guys can all hear okay in the back room? All right, thanks.
And I apologize if I say somebody's name wrong. You should have a letter from Adam and Amber Frontee before you, one from Teresa Seidel from the city of Hartford, a letter from Michelle Dickerson, a letter from David Puntaw, a letter from Dan Seifkin, a letter from Dan Hanson from Brookings County, city of Brookings, a letter from Senator Deb Peters, a letter from Amy Nelson, a letter from Larry Luthke, a letter from Michelle Thompson, and the last one from Diane Fries, is how you pronounce it. You also should have before you a report from DE&amp;R on the wastewater system, and I'll mention that in just a minute here. So you can see on the map outlined in red is the area that is proposed to be rezoned to a residential use. The area shown in the lightly shaded yellow is property that is within the city limits of Hartford. We've got two county highways, I'm not going here, that intersect, one east and west, one north and south, highways 130 and 151. The land here is zoned A1 agricultural around this property, except for in the city limits. This rectangle here to the north was annexed into the city within the last year. It is zoned I1 light industrial in the city, and Central State has a manufacturing plant there. The rest of the property here in the city limits is zoned NRC, which is natural resource and conservation, and they plan to build a sports complex in that area. The applicants for this petition, Mary Kidwiler and also Mark Klein, who will speak to you tonight, first annexed this into the city limits of Hartford, met with Hartford, discovered that Hartford does not have their zoning ordinance set up to do a plan development, and there was no date when sewer would be available for this area. They de-annexed the property, and after the waiting time for that to become official, they came and applied to the county to pursue their development. So the concept is to have a collection of twin homes and townhomes in this area. It's a low-impact design concept, and the petitioner will mention more about that when they stand up. Basically looks at trying to use the natural lay of the land to do the development. So for the audience to understand, a plan development is basically where you write your own zoning ordinance. You write the regulations on what is allowed within that land and how it's laid out, some setback requirements, and any restrictions. And so I'm going to go ahead and go through those. Part of that process is that you submit a map that breaks the area down into subareas, and each one, you can write regulations for each of those subareas. So the first one is Subarea A outlined there in the green in the circle, and that's on the west side of the property. And I've kind of highlighted the more important things for you. This is for twin home, single-family dwellings. There would be a maximum of 12 dwelling units, so six structures. They have set some limits on having a detached building, then the setbacks, which are pretty standard, actually probably a little bit higher than you might find for a rural residential structure. Then under number four, I've highlighted that the planning staff feels that these should be plumbed to connect to sanitary sewer system when it is available from the city of Hartford, and the petitioner is going to address that with you. The next subarea is the majority of this area. It's outlined there again in the yellow, Subarea B. And this area is for twin home development. Here, 36 structures or 36 buildings, which would have 145 dwelling units, and these are storied, I mean, there'd be one, two, and three levels. Again, in this area, one of the uses would be a wastewater system, basically septic system. And again, I'll point out that we are requiring the connection to the sanitary sewer system, should it come from Hartford at some point. The next subarea is in the northwest corner, Subarea C. And this subarea is basically where they would have a clubhouse, a swimming pool, anything that would be considered recreational, maybe basketball courts or a tennis court, and that would be located in that area. There will be a designated parking area there, so that people would not be parked on the street. You would park right there at the building. Again, there would be wastewater treatment center in that area, and then we have, again, some setback regulations which are pretty standard. The last subarea is shown in the pink. That would be Subarea D, should read. And this subarea looks at kind of the natural area in this, out in this development. Allowed to use would be the parkway system, a walking path, there are wetlands and water features, and then also the streets that would run throughout the development. And I do want to point out on the streets, because these are not a standard with, they're asking for. All streets are privately owned and maintained. They are not going to ask the township to maintain the streets. They will do a private maintenance agreement within the development, which some of our subdivisions do have in the rural area. They are planning to have two 16-foot wide paved rightways, basically two one-ways divided by a median, which would be 12 feet wide in the center. We are asking them that they conform to the paving standards that we do have already in our subdivision ordinance, and then very minor what they would name them as Boulevard or Place. So this map here shows you kind of the outline of what this development would look like. You can see the squares in the middle, which, oops, sorry, denote the buildings. Then the bunch of lines here, and then also to the south, these are the septic systems, the drain field lines that are shown there. The six, or I'm sorry, 12 units on the west that are the twin homes would each have their own standalone septic system. They wouldn't be tied into these systems.
Where are the systems for those other ones?
Where you see all the lines.
Oh, down there at the bottom?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not sure why this keeps popping, so. Now, we did ask the applicants to go ahead. Usually this wouldn't be required for a rezoning at this stage, but we asked them to submit their application to the state DE&amp;R to look at the septic systems, and they had TSP as their engineers designed the system. And so again, the letter that you have before you. The third paragraph in states that your request for a variance to design the wastewater flow for the large cluster drain field systems based on 2.7 persons per dwelling and generating 75 gallons per person per day is granted, and it's based on the following conditions that are listed in the letter in the following four pages. This is good for two years. So if they don't get this constructed within two years, they would have to reapply and go through everything with DE&amp;R again. Looking at what is in here, some of them are really technical engineering requirements that their firm, TSP, who they've hired, would take care of them. Some of them are conditions saying you can't do this over the drain field. You couldn't put a playground there, or you can't put a shed or something on the drain field. So there's a variety of things that will be required. The applicant is also looking at the wetlands that are already in the area, and then also adding some more additional wetlands, and those are kind of showed in the shaded area on the right side of the screen, so the east and the north areas. They are working with the Corps of Engineers. The Corps has walked the whole property, and so they are in the process, and I realize most of you understand that takes quite a while to go through the Corps with the paperwork. There is a large drainage area that kind of runs through the middle of this property that's quite deep, and the Corps has approved removal of that. We'll point out that everything on this property drains to the north. It does not drain south towards Hartford. It'll drain to the north, kind of to the corner. There's a culvert. It goes into a creek and crosses and goes further north. Water is going to be provided by Minnehaha County Rural Water, and I spoke with the director, Scott Bus, and they have approved this. They have a main line that runs right across, right along the north-south highway here, and they feel they have plenty of water available to meet the needs of this community. We had from our highway department, Shannon Schultz and Tom Wilsey go out, also from the city of Hartford, Teresa Seidel and their city engineer met out there to look at the access points. They are fine with the access. They realize it will not line up with the planned access across the street, but they did have some issues with culvert sizes, some grading and drainage, but that's not part of the rezoning, and that would become in the next phase if this is approved, and we would address those issues at that time. So just to stress, this is a land use issue tonight. I know that there are a lot of people who will get up here, and their concerns are valid, and we're happy to hear them, but they do understand that some of them don't pertain to the rezoning, but we do want to know what they are should this go on. Do we have the site plan review phase? Then we really want to address some of the issues that bring up tonight.
So I need to understand, this will come back?
Yes.
If we rezon it and it gets approved, it comes back before development starts?
Yes, they will have to do a preliminary subdivision plan. Basically, it's going to look a lot like what you have on the screen, but it'll layout, it'll show the drainage, it'll show the layout, the width of the roads, the more detail in the septic design, all the sort of extra details. So they have prepared this plan so that you conceptually could have an idea of what would be there, but really was not required yet at this, for tonight's meeting. So we took a look at, this is Hartford's future land use plan from their comprehensive plan, which was done in 2006, and we're looking at the property right up here, shown in the yellow, which is residential, and then, sorry, I lost it. And then, well, all the yellow is residential. South, you can see they had industrial and some commercial shown to develop there. So while this does meet their plan, again, across the street, they have changed their plan, which is, I mean, that happens after, you know, many years. Sometimes you don't, your plan changes a little bit. We looked at the design criteria, which is in Hartford's comprehensive plan, which calls for high-density multifamily, as long as it's near a principal arterial, which it is on the county highway and Western Avenue, which is the same major arterial, near institutional or employment centers, which it will be across the street where we have the industrial zoning and then the future recreational facility. That it's a transitional use, which it would be should they build someday future single-family homes to the west of this site and south, and that it have a lot of open space based on the size of the project which they are providing with the wetlands preservation areas. This is the county's comprehensive, current comprehensive plan, which was developed in 1998, and you can see at that time Hartford didn't extend much beyond where Highway 38 cuts through the city. The brown area was shown as a transitional area, meaning development would occur and gradually be taken in by the city, which has happened. This is a sneak peek over our future land use map that's currently being worked on by our task force. Again, you can see this is the area that we are talking about tonight, shown in the transitional area to be developed and then gradually absorbed by the city of Hartford. And this map, which I'll leave up to then when we get back to people speaking here, shows you the neighbors. I want to make sure I put their names up there so that when they address, you would know where they lived. This development, I want to mention that multifamily is traditionally a transition between single-family residents and other developing land uses. Again, the sports complex and the manufacturing that they already have. 20% of the development is used for open space on the current plan that they have. And then for a socio-economic standpoint, this will provide alternative housing, a lower price point than buying a single-family dwelling within the rural area. So we are based on the transition area that's shown in all three plans and residential. We are considering this to meet the comprehensive plans, and we're recommending approval of the rezoning to the Meadows Plan PD.
Ready for questions?
It's up to you, or if you want to hear from everybody first, it's either way.
I have a laundry list that can wait.
And some of them may be answered by the petitioners, too.
Do you want to wait? Or do you want, I have a couple that I want you to answer first.
That's fine.
I wasn't really sure, how many acres are you talking about? It says 30-plus.
Yeah, I mean, it's like 30.1 or 2 or something like that, so 30 acres.
Is there any current eligibility there?
No.
They used them, they sold them.
So I just, so there should have been one, but it's been sold off, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. And is, did I get that right? Is there really just one access point? I mean, and was that purposeful, or that's not a question for you?
No, no, that's fine. There is one access point, and I know you will notice in the letter from the city of Hartford, they would like to see another one. It does meet the standards of our subdivision plan, because you have a total round area, it's not just a, you know, a whole U.
Would you recommend that?
We're not opposed to it, because it meets the standards.
I mean, it's great, I drive there every day for work, so I'm thinking, okay, they can only come out once, but that's great, you know, but I'm thinking.
Correct, for emergency purposes, sometimes.
151 dwellings, 157. Or 157.
Not unheard of. I mean, if you think of neighborhoods that have gated communities, you have one way in and one way out, so.
And the last question I have is, do you have a bigger picture so I can see where the city limits of Hartford come out in connection with that? I realize that across the street has been annexed, but I want to know how far, how far south we have to go to get to city limits at that point?
Okay, unless it's the original. I mean, this one I zoomed in so that you would see where people lived, and I can go back and see if I can find it on the first one.
I want to make sure everybody understands.
Sure. Final pull-up.
Yeah, sorry, I just, I know, I knew that had been annexed, and I wasn't sure, like, if the whole, anything on the west side of Hartford has been annexed.
It's a ways down to the south.
Because I know there's some residences along that west side of that road, but I didn't know if they were even in city limits or not.
No, there's operating farm there as well, so.
Madam Chair, could I perhaps ask for?
Yeah, well, we're waiting, you bet.
Pat, did I see where there's a thirty-five-foot restriction on the height of the buildings? Is that?
On that standard, in our zoning ordinance, it's thirty-five feet. When you go higher, you go into a different building code, you get the commercial building code. And actually, in the one-sub area, let me find that, it's actually higher, which would be the ones that have the townhouses. They have asked for an eighty-five-foot maximum, and that, and I will have, Mark will come up and explain that to you, but that's because they're going to have two floors with nine-foot ceilings. The third and top floor would have a nineteen-foot ceiling. And so they will have to meet some tougher codes for the construction of that by doing
Madam Chair. So on the parking issue, how many parking spots per unit will they have? Are they going to have like two hundred-foot?
Some of the units will have double garages, some will be single, and they will have the driveways that go with those. There were, it will be passable to have one, you know, to have vehicles parked on one side of the driving lane, not on both sides squarely. They meet their required, yeah, and that will be part of the preliminary plan as well.
One last question, if I may. That's kind of an odd-shaped parcel, and there's that little cutoff by the intersection of the two county roads. Is that the former county?
Yeah, the county, yeah, the county acquired land at some point for that area.
So does the county still own that little, little bit?
They own, yeah, they do have a right-ofway there. Basically, they took it as an H lot on the corner to make the curve. And then some of the wetlands, I think actually the Corps has authority over those and part of the ditch too, so.
Thank you.
Pat, just for clarification.
Yeah.
If there's somebody parked in the street, and we're also going to have somebody walk by, and we only have a sixteen-foot right-ofway, is there adequate room for, I mean, because Scott, and I'm sure you were wondering, because when you said you needed a twenty-foot driveway, I'm thinking, then why do we only need a sixteen-foot wide street?
This is, this is one-way traffic. There is adequate.
Parking along the side.
Yeah, but they're not, I'm going to have them be a little bit clearer on that because I think it's more in front of the driveway part, so you could pull off partway. But it is sufficient for passing, I will tell you. It will slow down traffic.
For an emergency vehicle?
Emergency vehicle, they'll bust right through if they have to, but yeah.
Even if there's cars there?
Yeah, they'll go right through, but it should be.
Yeah, no, when he asks for the twenty-foot driveway, I'm thinking, okay, slow down.
But that is also true, when you're going out onto a road, you want it wider, so you do have a little more flexibility in coming in and off versus being just on a residential street. And so the driveway into this is much wider with the turning lane as well, so.
Any other questions for Pat, if this is good? And we'll probably call you back, of course. Okay, thanks. Okay, is the petitioner here? And Mary, I just wanted to tell you again, you know, we're going to try to go by the thirty-minute guideline.
We will try to do that, so.
Realizing that everybody wants to be heard as well, so.
Yep, okay. My name is Mary Kidwiler. My address is 1001 Parkway Boulevard, Brookings, South Dakota. I am the owner of the property where the proposed housing development, The Meadows, will be located and which we're here tonight to discuss. I'd like to introduce Mark Klein. He is the managing partner of The Meadows, and Mark is responsible for the research and development of this project. I've spent my entire life in some form of agriculture. I have a deep love and respect for agriculture, and one cannot love agriculture and not be an environmentalist. I'm very excited about this project and what it can bring to the Hartford area as well as to Minnehaha County. The mission of this project is to create a unique, eco-friendly neighborhood that provides a haven from everyday life as well as taking our environment into consideration. With our innovative design, we have minimized the use of met land while maximizing environmental benefits. Ladies and gentlemen, with your permission, we have a short PowerPoint to help explain what we're all about, and Mark will provide the narrative.
Good evening. My name is Mark Klein, and I am working with Mary on this project. We've got a little PowerPoint to share with you at this point. Can I use the mouse? Is that all right? I'm better with the mouse.
Just in case you think we can't see, we have it all right here, so we're watching now.
Okay. We're The Meadows Development Company, and it's a housing development for rural Minnehaha County, The Meadows at Hartford. Our mission statement for The Meadows Development is to create a unique, ecologically friendly townhouse development. The Meadows' overarching horticultural design and carefully integrated community space will encourage a healthy lifestyle for our residents. We've placed a very high standard of excellence in place throughout all of our efforts to date. Extensive research and development took place for over two years that delivered a summary you have before you today. Numerous individuals, companies, individuals, universities, public entities have collaborated with us to help create the finished product we offer for your consideration, and we're very grateful for their efforts. We are not just the land to build on. Our site has a cutting-edge philosophy that is forward-reaching in its design and that delivery for the Minnehaha County area. Natural components of the land, plus the collaboration and research we have done, have been carefully woven into the creation of The Meadows Development's design that you have before you. We know our location will offer one of the top environmental presentations and a healthy lifestyle unparalleled in all of the Sioux Falls communities. This is a rendering of the entrance as it will look as you come into The Meadows from Western Avenue. I might point out that that's a three-lane entrance area. There's a full five-car-length turn lane in addition to two traffic lanes. This drawing, site drawing, Pat has already shared some detail with you, and we welcome questions that would be a part of that as we move further through this discussion. We have 29.93 acres with townhouse-focused development that include 145 townhouses, twelve twin homes, and they're all placed inside a safe, family-friendly addition. I'm going backwards. Sorry. The Meadows, with a plan to deliver these townhouses, will have affordable housing for a demographic segment that has a need, and this need is very strong in this part of the county. With a plan to deliver, our project is primarily about the dirt and the water. Why is it going the wrong way? Can you help me?
This is very touchy how when you're moving here.
Apologize for that. And we have something a little different we would like to share with you concerning both of these. It's doing it again, I apologize.
Use the keyboard. Use this here.
With an emphasis on a safe and healthy lifestyle, we believe consumers' interest in our development will speak for itself, and we will be known for our unique boulevards with center medians, a large, integrated, private parkway system with its own pedestrian and bike path, ease of access for locating every home, and a lifestyle option for everyone. The design available in The Meadows has options that encourage diversity and inclusion. No curb obstacles for any resident or visitor. Our design also includes small real estate residential elevators that will strengthen our product delivery for some residents. Full 88 construction design is available for the interiors, and a less-than-two-percent-grade driveway for additional ease of access will be designed into this for all residents and Our runoff water management will be achieved several different ways. Our process is different and a key component to our whole project. That system utilizes bioswales. Bioswales and water management are a very integral part of how this works naturally in nature. And one of the things that you will find with what we are doing is that you will see rain gardens and wetland-enhanced areas, and even a pond. Our rain gardens are a very strong feature to point out to you. All of the townhouses and twin homes will have rain gardens, and those rain gardens will be there to manage their rooftop runoff water. And each individual building inside the development will have its own horticultural feature to use this runoff water for. The full development has a carefully-integrated parkway system that includes a six-tenths-of-a-mile-long walking path, just over three acres of wetland and natured areas, center medians for all of our streets that bring the parkway to every household's front door. A sense of community will take place with individual garden space available for each resident in our two-acre garden area. Public gardens are not only beautiful destinations, but they are a true source of inspiration for homeowners on how to conserve within their own landscapes. Hopefully, some of our gardening will look like this. A key design component centers around our trees and this very unique aspect that we are working on. All of our streets will have center medians. All of the medians will be covered with trees and shrubs and flowers, no grass. And those spacious boulevards with one-way traffic on each side will enhance the standard of living for every resident. We believe in this project and look for your support and your confirmation of this. In summary, our idea is all about creating a strong residential development in western Minnehaha County near Hartford. Our development design offers innovative residential living space in the Hartford area with hopes to help with the current affordable housing shortage. We believe this project is a progressive design that will have an interested consumer, and with your approval of our request, we look forward to a spring of 2013 start. The Meadows, embracing the future, and with your approval, we would like to open homes for sale spring of 2013. That concludes my presentation. We have several people who have asked to speak on behalf of this, and I don't know if you want that next, or if we want to deal with some of your questions first.
Any preference on anybody's part? Why don't we hear from those that are speaking on your behalf, and then we'll present you with questions if we have?
The first person to speak is unable to be here this evening. His name is Bill Zortman. He's at Washington High School right now broadcasting the girls' basketball game for Brandon. And so keeping that in mind, he asked to come before you.
Hi, I'm Bill Zortman. The year was 2000. We moved our family from Tennessee to Hartford, South Dakota. In that time, I've had a chance to work closely with a lot of the city and the county officials on projects of importance. Actually, I was the marketing chair of the Hartford Area Development Corporation. During that time, we came up with a slogan that fit well, marketed the community to a lot of people. Hartford, South Dakota, on the edge of everything. Well, that worked with housing. That worked with a number of other projects that people became aware of. It worked so well that in 2011, home sales in this community were up 32%, the most of any community in the real estate area. 2012, number two to Canton, up 28%. 2013 is a different year. We started the year behind the previous two years. The big reason? There are not enough homes for sale. Not enough homes for sale, and the city council and Planning and Zoning Commission said no to a project that would have put homes in the community. In 2010, I had the chance to work as a marketing chair again, but this time heading up the Home Builders Association Marketing Committee. We came up with an idea that really served the area pretty well, and it involved working together builders, realtors, bankers, with a buy-now, build-now campaign. In fact, Hartford was the first community to join that project. As we pulled everybody together, it was a time that home sales were getting negative ink across the country. Television stations were talking about home sales being down. Would our economy improve? Actually, it improved immediately in Sioux Falls. I do a radio business show, the only business show in Sioux Falls, and we had the head of the realtors, had the head of the home builders, and bankers on our show every month talking about the need to improve the area. Guess what we did? In 2012, sales were up 20%. We start 2013, up 87% over January a year ago. But even with those good figures, the one number that's down across the board, the number of homes for sale. Home builders, realtors say, we need more homes, and we need to work together. Well, this comes at a time that Hartford has had the opportunity to do something and couldn't, wouldn't, should have. The county has stepped in. They're looking now, understanding that in Minnehaha County, there is that shortage. There is a need for creative ideas. The Meadows is a project that works. It's a project that can do much like Del Rapids did. You have a price level that fits those people and their income. It also creates a base for employment. We hope that the county commission, the Planning and Zoning Committee, will take the time to look at this project and say yes. Looks like The Meadows, something that's going to be very important to the Hartford area, will have to be on the edge of everything.
I have several other letters that I would like to summarize and read portions of for people that were not here, if that's okay at this time.
We've got fifteen minutes left.
The first letter is addressed to you, and it is from Dan Hanson, the Planning and Zoning Administrator, City of Brookings. It is my pleasure to speak to The Meadows Project as well as the owner of this project. Housing development is essential at this point in our state's history. In this region of the state, we are seeing low inventory of new and affordable housing. This is especially true in the Sioux Falls area. Mary Kidwiler, owner of the property for the proposed Meadows Project, has been a respected member of the Brookings area community for many years. Mary currently serves on the City of Brookings Board of Adjustment. She brought with her to this position over eight years of experience on the Brookings County zoning board. Her insightful thinking and sound reasoning is an asset to the Board of Adjustment and the Brookings community as a whole. As we move into the new century, escalating land prices and building costs, along with flatline income for consumers, has put an increased pressure on developers and contractors to deliver a good to deliver a good product at a reasonable price. This means innovative ideas and so-called out-of-the-box thinking in order to meet the needs that this region is experiencing today. Along with the increased costs, environmental issues are becoming more of a factor in development as well. I applaud the effort that the Meadows has given to keeping costs low in order to offer affordable housing as well as being environmentally responsible. The City of Brookings would welcome a development such as the Meadows. That's signed by Dan Hanson. I have another letter here. This letter is from Deb Peters, Senator District Nine, for Hartford area. I'm writing this letter to support the Meadows, a proposed development project that will create affordable housing as well as a desirable community for all of the Hartford area. The unique development of this project will have a positive impact on the area and will bring innumerable benefits to both Minnehaha County and the Hartford area. I personally welcome what it would offer and believe the innovation and design of the Meadows is an exciting opportunity for the community to grow and to showcase environmentally-friendly living concepts. The development would deliver a lifestyle that is not available in the surrounding communities, and the design is a unique introduction to the concept in the area. Again, I offer my wholehearted support for the Meadows Development Project and truly believe it would bring a new and innovative way of living to the area and encourage your approval of their plans. Several other letters are attached. I have a letter here from Dan Sifkin, Executive Director of the South Dakota Multiple Housing Association, and he points out several things for his support. I have another letter here from the City of Canton and their city planner, Amy Nelson. I have another letter here from Larry Lukie with Keller Williams. Larry is here to speak to it himself, and he'll be up here shortly. We have a letter from Michelle Thompson. Michelle is the Living Hartford Housing Committee Chairman and a Realtor with Team Real Estate. And obviously, she is voicing her support, and you have a copy of her letter. We also have a letter from one of the business owners, the owner of the Hartford Steakhouse and Tavern. Many of you may have eaten there. She asked for you to give great consideration and support for this project. These are a sampling and a cross-section of many people who have support for this project and would encourage you to consider this on a favorable basis. I would like to yield the rest of the time now to some of the gentlemen that are here to speak in person, if I could.
Sure, I just have one quick question for you before you start. You know, most of your letters kind of indicate that cities that would... And you said the City of Hartford, and I can't remember. You did go to the City of Hartford at first, but they declined because...
We began discussions with the City of Hartford in August of last year. I have a whole history of all of the detail of that, if you'd like that.
No, Pat did say it, but I can't remember what the reason was that it was declined by the City of Hartford.
They don't have a planned development way to write that district, and they didn't...
No ordinance for planned development.
Right, and they didn't want to add one at this time, so...
I couldn't remember what it was, so, okay. All right.
Anything else?
Anybody else have a question for Mark?
That was August of 2012.
Yes.
I would have a question. Will these be like condos or will they be privately-owned units? Or will there be homeowners association, duos, et cetera?
Several questions, let me take them one at a time if I can. There will be townhouses, not condominiums. And with a townhouse, you own land. There will be a homeowners association for this whole site, and that homeowners association will manage and protect the property values with its own covenants and rules. Does that answer your point of question?
What, how affordable is it?
We have done extensive research into the demographics and the income ratios, or the income levels for the average residents in Hartford and also this portion of Minnehaha County. And depending on some of the costs that are still yet to be determined, some of which you have control over tonight, we'll have affordable housing for all but probably the low twenty percent of that demographic. Is that a non-answer that's close to an answer?
Anybody else? Mark?
I have a couple of questions.
Mark, I think we still have some questions going. Or Mary, Mark or Mary?
So the rain gardens, those would be maintained by the owner?
All of the outside of the properties is managed by the association.
Okay.
With the exception of the individual garden areas that are for fruits and vegetables that way.
Okay. And then the bike path, the walking path that you mentioned, that would be wood chips or asphalt?
It'll actually be in gravel with a permeable surface so that it doesn't have, doesn't create any additional runoff water. It's designed as a walking path. Part of its length along Nineteenth Street will be paved, but the rest will be gravel.
And I'm not sure if you're able to answer this question or not, but it's related to school bus service. And I realize, I mean, would, I don't know where the City of Hartford picks up students. I don't know if there's anyone, maybe someone else who's...
I don't want to sound funny with this, but I think they pick up students where they live. And this is on the edge of Hartford, and I'm not aware of any students that are getting picked up with school buses right there. But the other residents in that area...
I just know some school districts, you have to live with certain mile, certain number of miles from the school in order to have school bus service. So I'm thinking about children walking to school and safe routes to school. I mean, that's just where my mind is at.
I'm not able to speak to that.
Because on the map, the school, grade school is way down on the south end.
I know where it is, yeah.
I just want to ask you for clarification.
There is no good way for anyone to walk to school from that site, that was true.
Yeah, and there isn't any sidewalks between here and there to walk by.
Thank you. Okay, so anyone else that wishes to speak in support of this item?
I'm Larry Lukie, and my address, 1100 South Phillips Avenue. I'm a Realtor with Keller Williams Realty Sioux Falls. I am for this project being approved as proposed. Right now, with the low number of homes on the market, more buyers entering into the market because they're feeling more secure about their job and/or they've been able to sell their properties to move on, job transfers, business expansions, and business relocations to the area, this is an ideal time for this project. Also, with the growth of Sioux Falls over the years, we're now at a point based on size, cost of doing business, you start seeing the smaller towns around Sioux Falls growing at a faster rate than you've seen in years past. And because of that, we're going to want to stay ahead of the housing needs that are currently needed and needed in the future. This amazing environmentally-free project for this county is much needed in the area. I can see how, based on this project has been set up, is well-thought-through, that many people who purchase these townhomes and twin homes will live there for years to come. This is not just a home to them, it will be a community. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak in support of this item?
I'm Mark Luke, sorry, I got a little bit of a sore throat. Mark Luke, 26555465th Avenue, Hartford. I've lived there since I was a little kid, so I'm familiar with the area too. I also serve on the Hartford Area Housing Committee with Michelle, one of the letters that you have. And as a builder and a resident of the area, I saw the PowerPoints and the things, the amount of study and thought that was put into this. I actually visited other developments up in the Minneapolis area that were done similarly, not as well-thought-out as this, not as well-done as this, and still really beautiful. So I think this is going to be a really strong draw for that area to get more people, you know, to work that we need for all kinds of businesses in this area. And it's green, it's well-thought-out, it's well-engineered, and I would urge you to approve this.
Does anybody else want to speak in support? All right, well, we'll include that part of it then, and then anybody that's in opposition to this item is free to come up and state your name at the podium and address.
I'm Cheryl Prunty. I live at 25750462nd Avenue, Hartford. My husband and I own a property adjoining to the north and to the west. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to voice our concerns tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of several of the landowners in the area, and as I say their name, I'd like them to stand so you know where they're located. Adam Prunty, Dan Prunty, Mike Grace, Nathan Grace, Michelle and Terry Dickerson, Dave Putoff, Carly Olson, and Dan Tobin. We are against the rezoning of this project for several reasons. Our main concern is the proposed sewer system. The first phase of this project appears to not connect to the City of Hartford sewer system. Instead, they plan to have several large drain fields that all of the homes are connected to. There will be two very large drain fields located very close to all four of the acreages, and those are located on the map. And just for your information, Hartford is misspelled, and so is Prunty. Those acreages on this quarter section. We have serious concerns about runoff, saturated soils, and the viability of this type of sewer system. We fear that on a normal or higher-than-normal rainfall season, that these drain fields could back up, and the runoff downstream and landowners and farmers would be affected greatly. We have several questions as well. If a farmer installed a hog confinement with similar sewer system drain fields, would they need permission from the surrounding landowners? And if that is the case, would this be the same in this scenario? Another question, how many of other, how many other rural developments are in the county like this? How many, if any, utilize this type of sewer and downfield system? And finally, the City of Hartford spent many months discussing and researching this development. The City of Hartford voted no on this project, and we all feel that they made a very good decision for very good reasons because the project does not conform to the city's zoning ordinances. There are several members of that Planning and Zoning Committee here tonight. We hope that they will speak to you as well. Thank you again. Also, I find it, we found this little ad in our local phone directory, and I think Pat might have copies of that for you as well.
Can I have your list of questions? I think we'll have Pat address them later on, and I mean... Does anybody have questions for Cheryl? Okay, thanks, Cheryl. Anyone else speaking in opposition?
George Ham, 700 Shamrock Drive. I'm one of the members of the Planning and Zoning Committee for Hartford. Without getting into all of the previous things which will happen, I'm sure, in the future. Access to the development, we feel, is a primary concern, which is one-way in. Yes, on a normal day, when people are coming and going, it's probably going to be plenty. What if there's a disaster? What if there's a fire? We need more people in there faster. It's not enough access in the area. The rural water does not provide enough water. Do they have sprinkler systems and fire protection for all of these housing units? Or enough fire hydrant capability for our fire department there in Hartford, which is going to be a big burden on the fire department, to build up so that they can protect that area in case of a disaster, a fire, have a fire? Sidewalks, there's no sidewalks on the whole area. So yes, the streets are sixteen feet wide. That lets you park a car on the side and squeeze past, perhaps not a truck. But where are the people going to walk when they're squeezing past? Safety issues? We just, they just crossed tonight twenty-foot driveway, and we got sixteen-foot driveways. I realize they're only one direction. The septic system, I guess I have a tough time. I work with a lot of agricultural people. I work with a lot of feedlots and hog operations, and I see the trouble they have getting themselves permitted. If they've got anybody within a half a mile, they can stop that project cold. Well, we've got probably a minimum of four hundred and thirty-five animal units of people going to live there. That's a lot of waste to be taken care of in leach fields. And that to Hartford and to us is a concern. To me personally, it's a very big concern. They pointed out the water runs to the north on this whole property, yet the leach field is on the south side. I think I know one of the, one of the primary things you've got to know when you're a plumber. That doesn't work, to have the water running to the north and the sewer running to the south. Maintenance, we don't want to concern on too much rain. Will it, where will the water go? Water kind of takes care of itself. I've never really been too concerned about the water. I'm more concerned about a year like this. What do they do to keep all of these rain gardens and trees in these, middle of these streets? How do they keep them all alive? Where's those sprinkler system? Where's the watering system to keep them alive on a year like this? Now we've got all these dead trees and all these dead bioswales. I don't think it's been as well-thought-out as many people say, but I do understand why though the real estate people would like to see it go through. So if I was a real estate person, I'd be voting yes too. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Mike Grace, 25744463rd Avenue. And that water does not all drain north now. Some on that south side does go to the south. Now, as a farmer, I've got to get a half-mile upstream to do some tiling. I can't understand why they can bring all this water to my corner or to drain into my corner. I can see, you know, it's fine when it don't rain a lot, but when we get a big rain, is it going to blow it out? Am I going to be flooded downstream? As far as all this housing, you know, south part of Hartford's got a lot of places to build. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, if nobody wants to speak, okay.
Mark Waidler, 508 Aaron Circle, Hartford. I have an objection to, somebody earlier said they went to Minnesota to look at a comparable development. I was asked as part of the Planning and Zoning Board, I have had an opportunity to look at one of those developments in Minnesota that they were touting as being comparable. When I came into the development right away, the first thing I saw was curbs and sewers. It was absolutely nothing like they're proposing here. So from my point of view, this is all happy butterflies and bioswales and all this, but to me, they haven't been honest from the very beginning of this whole development. Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Dan Tobin. I live at 46354257th Street. That'd be a mile north and a half mile to the east of this project. There's been a lot of talk about traffic in and out. There's been no talk about the traffic on Western Avenue. Now, in the fall and spring, we're going to have a lot of heavy equipment out there. Farmers moving. Western Avenue is a thoroughfare to the Hartford elevator. You know, no one's talked about that. The existing road right now, since, excuse me, Central States is going to be moving. You know, no one's talked about that. The existing road right now, Central States is going to be moving a lot of trailers out of there. That's something that should be considered. Also, you know, they're talking about getting this thing moving this spring at 13. Something that's big, I think, is a little rambunctious to take care of in one evening. Everybody needs to slow down a little bit and look at everything. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, at this time, if the applicant wants to, you can make a few comments.
First of all, I'd like to speak to some of the septic questions which appear to be quite prominent. In our discussion and in all of the efforts that we've made to date, one of the things that has been asked is that we do a double or dry hookup sewer connection to the city of Hartford plus our full site septic system. Seven months of effort to reach out, to educate, explain and work with the city representatives of Hartford have really just delivered the following. We are being asked to build pipes to nowhere, sort of like a bridge to nowhere in our opinion. No date for the delivery of these vital city services exists, nor is one planned. Yet, a financial penalty by imposing this additional double system cost is being requested and could be forced upon our development. That penalty that includes these pipes to nowhere, and it further reduces our competitive position as we try to do business. Perhaps that's desired by some in this discussion. It also forces additional potential site modification and building costs to create something we view as never needed on our eventual homeowners. Highly qualified engineers working on our behalf from TSP, plus regulatory officials on the state level, have reviewed our 80-plus-page detailed documents for a permanent solution to our septic needs. And by the way, we are not trying to make water flow uphill. Pardon our sarcasm, but we're not proposing a temporary solution like a porta-pod for our residents. And we feel imposing a double system's cost is both unfair and unreasonable. Please approve our request to avoid this double system's imposition and allow us to proceed with only our own standalone septic system for our residents. We have met and carefully worked with the requirements in peer for this. As far as emergency and traffic access, I'd like to offer some detail that we have for you on that. Traffic access to County Highway 51. Increase in traffic numbers generated by the Meadows will not impede the flow of traffic on Highway 151. We have a five-car-length turn lane engineered into our exit from 19th Street onto 151. Minnehaha County Highway Department has approved the Meadows access site. Traffic analysis and traffic count studies completed by the Meadows Development Company have been discussed with the staff, and we believe they agree that our additional residential traffic is both manageable and acceptable. That's what it looks like coming in and out. Car traffic analysis on Western Avenue for the Meadows, here's a thought. The Meadows, when completely sold out, will have a total of 157 residences. If all residences are projected to have two vehicles, we feel that projection is overstated. This total of 314 vehicles would be the maximum vehicle count using this normal assumption of maximum traffic to manage. Please note that we have 87 of our residences with only one-car garages, and we expect a portion of those households to have single resident with only one vehicle at that residence. The Meadows vehicular projections look like this. 58 two-car townhouses, 12 twin homes, and 87 one-car garage townhouses. Our development has targeted marketing to single homeowners and retired homeowners, and we fully expect 35% of our residents to fit into that group. We would further offer this projection. 20% of our residents are projected to be self-employed or retired. That's another 31 households. 25% of our residents are projected to be single, not two-person occupancy, add an additional 5%. Our analysis conservatively adjusts the traffic assumption for the Meadows, reducing the total number of households by 39 households. The reduced total of households that would then impact traffic assumptions for a morning commute exiting the Meadows onto Western Avenue is 118 households. 118 households times two vehicles exiting is 236 vehicles. If half of this group turn north and half turns south, this equals 118 turning in each direction. There's even more detail if you'd like it. But what we have done is, we've done traffic counts. We've done analysis of what people would normally use for hours to commute to and from work. And what you see is peak times and a breakdown of the vehicles in our residential area that would impact this. In no instance is there more than one car in either direction in any given minute in that particular approach. Based upon our current traffic studies and the demographic projection for our residents, we feel that our five-car-length turning lane and our entrance-exit design for 19th Street is adequate to meet our residents' needs. Additional questions were raised about sidewalks. I'd like to speak to them if I could. We have a bike and a walking path. It's a half-mile-plus walking path on-site that will have exciting horticultural design features created specifically for the Meadows for people to take a walk on. And it wraps around the full development with a protected private outdoor area. We have a walking path that surrounds basically that whole 30 acres. No resident will live further than a half a block from this. The only expected traffic in the development will be local traffic. There are no through streets to encourage speed or increase traffic as a travel route to somewhere else. 71% of the streets accessing Highway 38 in Hartford do not currently have sidewalks. And 60% of the streets accessing Western Avenue currently do not have sidewalks. And these are all through streets by comparison. We think we've addressed that concern. As far as fire, the Meadows Detention Pond is a unique feature, but it has a lot of practical aspects to it. Our detention pond has two purposes. One, to receive and treat excess water from our development. Two, to feed through a very sophisticated system specifically engineered with tiers of flow ports, the neighboring wetland to the north and the east, to keep it healthy and vibrant. And by the way, we've discussed that at length with the Corps, and they are very comfortable with that. Our pond at normal depth will be four foot deep. And this sizing of our pond area was specifically done to protect young children by having a shallower pond. When successive rainstorms occur, the full capacity of the pond increases in depth to a full nine feet. At a four-foot depth, we will have 5,720 square feet of surface water and 115,000 gallons of water available as a supplemental source for the local fire department, should that be needed. At its maximum capacity, it will be nine foot deep. That will rarely happen. It will take many, many days of rain over and over and over to do this. But that surface area would then increase to 15,087 square feet of water surface, basically a third of an acre. And by the way, that would hold 574,812 gallons of water available for emergency need if need be. While some of the water does flow north or south, what happens with the water that stands in there is that it lies in a ditch. And that ditch or drainage ditch area that was attached to the wetlands was something that we worked very carefully with the Corps on, and they have approved our removal of that for safety and site design reasons. That ditch, when removed, is being part of a new created wetlands that has been mitigated onto the east edge of the property. As far as what was seen in Minneapolis by Mark in regards to bioswales or developments, I don't know. Other people have gone up there and seen wonderful things. They are not exactly like ours, and we don't pretend to be that development. I know that there are a lot of things that have questions going for all of us, but I do want to say that we have worked very carefully with the staff. This is not a one-day project. We've been in touch with the staff since early in December. And in lengthy discussions with many details for all of what's been done here, we bring that before you for consideration with their recommendation and our request. I'd certainly open it up if you have other questions that I haven't answered.
Does anybody have questions for Mark right now? I think we'll have Pat come up and answer a few questions. Thank you.
How did Cheryl go? And I have Cheryl's questions here in front of me. And the first one addressed a hog confinement for their drain fields, or I would assume she meant their lagoons. That also requires a conditional use permit when you're building a CAFO to come before this body, and then can be appealed onto the county commission. There are setback requirements for those which are enforced by also the DNR for the lagoons. The same with the septic system, and for that reason, that's part of why DNR has already checked the septic system as well, to make sure it does meet the setback requirements. So in both cases, I'm a little confused on needing landowner permission, and I'm assuming that she's talking about where we have our suggested setbacks between a CAFO and residential structures, which are just suggestions. They can be lowered, or they could be enforced higher if you wanted to as well. Those, we do have a provision in our ordinance where you can get landowners to sign off, which prevents, you know, them coming to the meeting and then saying, you know, basically saying that they're okay with it being a lesser setback for the CAFO in relation to where their house is. Cheryl also asked how many other rural developments are there in the county like this? And if any, do they have this drain field system? We don't have any in the county that are specifically designed like this, the size. We have, as everybody's aware, we have a number of our rural subdivisions that have been out there for years, but each house is on its own individual septic system. We don't have any that would have a joint septic system like this. And, oh, okay, then that was just about Hartford. I did want to say, and I forgot this, that since this application came in, we have been in full contact with city of Hartford through Teresa Seidel, the city manager, and she has received all the information. So they have been a part of this, and I just wanted to also point out that, and I can't remember which gentleman's asked about the fact or kind of the timeframe of this. If this were to be approved, and they do have to do a preliminary site plan, which again, we would look at many of the issues that were raised today. The access points, fire protection, sidewalks, the walking system, the bioswales, all that would come into play. And Hartford does have a joint plating area now that covers this area. So their planning commission and their city council have to also approve those plans. So we haven't worked out the details. I'm doing joint meetings yet for that. But they will be involved. They will sit at the table, and they will review those areas. They don't have joint zoning, but they do have the joint plating. So that would address the preliminary plan, and then if they do final plats, they also have to approve those as well. So I just wanted to make that point, because I don't think a lot of people ever would have that had happened.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, and then I hope the rest of these guys ask questions. Mike Grace had mentioned a couple of things, and I guess I'm not enough of an engineer, but he did seem to have a good point in the fact that we said the water drained to the north, and yet we put the drainage fields to the south.
Yeah.
And I know that DNR addressed this, but do you have any comments about that at all?
I've got to rely on the DNR for that, and also the hired engineers. I mean, we have to trust that TSP has designed this. He is right, though, you know, if you have to notify half a mile downstream for tiling. And this does cross, that's why we're getting, you have it crossing somewhere. It's pretty hard to point out on the map, but it crosses. Then it does flow onto this property, and I think eventually wraps back around. But that's why the Corps of Engineers is involved, and the highway department will also be involved with the drainage issues to ensure that they are not, you know, shoving massive amounts of water downstream.
So will they be in contact with him as they develop this, the DNR?
I would guess so.
Okay, I have one other question. I've taken up all the time. But I see, this is in a very highly agricultural area. And normally, we talk about right-to-farm coverage and all of that, but maybe that happens at the next phase as well. But I would think we almost have to address that at this phase before we would turn this into a PD so that these people would recognize that there's a lot of agricultural activity going on in that area.
Right, and that is one of the things that, I mean, definitely bring it up. With a rezoning, we cannot put conditions on anything.
Okay.
That's just, you know, a state law.
It's a concern. I just want to express that.
But expressing it, I think, is great, because if this does advance, then when we get to that preliminary plan, we can put those conditions on, that we will require that everybody who were to purchase the property has to sign, you know, a right-to-farm notice and file it.
Feasibly with eggs surrounding this, other than on one side, we could have animal development going on in that area as well.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, Mike Grace would have to address this, but I think sometimes he does.
Right, there's usually, I think hunters do too. All right. I'm done asking questions for a little bit, so go ahead.
Okay, can I go through my list? All right. All right, this whole thing is interesting. Yes, there's, I understand the need for affordable housing. However, that is not what this is about. This is about density zone, period. This is where you are asking us to create a town adjacent to an existing municipality for 390 people. Now, in my book, he's talking over 150 units. In rural speak, they already have used their eligibility except for one. They've sold them. They're there. But now they're coming to us and want 150 eligibilities at $40,000 apiece. They want us to give them over $6 million of the eligibilities right there. That's how it works out in county rural Minnehaha County. But the other thing is this, and it's more important to me, is I've been on this board for 12 years, and if there's one thing that sets, that is always difficult to deal with, it's precedence. Okay, picture that parcel of land. Picture every municipality in this county. How many, if the county approves this without the city of Hartford's approval? We have just said, "The heck with you, cities. You don't know what you're doing." Now, I could do this in Campbell, I could do it in Colton, Crooks, Dells. Dells, I couldn't. I couldn't do this in Dell Rapids. They have a three-mile reciprocity agreement. Their city would say no. And I can think of the exact spot where this would work, on the north side of Dells, because we move seven eligibilities up to the northwest corner of that property, and it's just sitting there waiting, but the city of Dells, they would say no to this if you don't follow our stuff. So what do we want from a county perspective? We'll end up with a whole bunch more three-mile reciprocity agreements is what we'll end up with. Instead of dealing with storage units on the west side of Rowena, we'll be dealing with housing units housing units on the east side of Rowena. So when you get into that, is there anything, that's my biggest concern with this whole thing. Like I said, you can picture this on every municipality in this country, and the county has no business dictating this to these municipalities. The second thing is, we have consistently said to these developments, and they were started in the sixties and the seventies before nineteen eighty-five, "If you are not affiliated with a sanitary sewer district, you will not grow." That is the end of the story. Ever since I've been on this board, that has been the position we have taken. They are saying, "Well, Hartford, yeah, maybe not, we don't want anything to do with you." This is not a sanitary sewer district that I've seen. And if it's not, it still gets back to the fact that I still come back to Hartford. This is a Hartford issue, and it's a huge Hartford issue. They're gonna, looking right across the street from that. I know if you haven't driven by there, that's the new athletic complex. They'll tell all the kids that live in that place, "Where are you gonna go? Jump on your bike and right over there, it's right across the highway. Go play soccer, baseball, wherever you want over there, because the people of Hartford built that for you. Isn't that nice? Your group contributed nothing to it." All right? So I don't see how, as a county, we can approve this type of development. It is wrong according to our current density zoning and what we're doing. It's totally inconsistent and sets a very bad precedent. It's all nice and feely, yes, it's a wonderful place to live, and, yeah, how many more of these do you want to deal with? They have to cooperate with the city.
And can I just say too, Teresa Seidel was not able to be here for the city, so I just wanted to let you know.
Because this is basically my hometown, that's where my kids, I know every one of those guys on that planning board, I know most of the farmers that come up here. And Hartford's a bad place to get things approved, quite frankly. We had to have a frickin' chimney fall through the school before we get new school buildings built out there. That's how slow Hartford is to develop when it comes to things. But still, it's, just like I say, it's still a Hartford issue, not a county issue, as far as I'm concerned.
If we have joint planning with them, why are they not here at the table tonight?
We don't have joint planning, we have joint plating.
Joint plating?
Plating.
I thought you were kind of like indicating we were gonna do the same thing we do in Dells, and I'm like, well then why aren't you?
No, what we have-
All right, thanks, that clarified it then.
We have a handshake agreement with Hartford to cover Hartford township, where we notify them of every application that comes into that area. On this one, I have been in contact with Teresa the whole time. I believe that she sent her zoning, four members of her zoning board to speak tonight, but the letter raised concerns, but it did not say that they were totally against it. No, I, I mean, they had big concerns, and I'm not negating those, I think they're very valid concerns, but most of them aren't rezoning issues, so, I mean, I can't-
Sorry, I took a wee time, go ahead. No, I'm-
Was there a question?
I'm done.
Basically, I am. I can say from a planning and zoning standpoint, it is inappropriate for us to approve this type of deal without the express consent of the City of Hartford, because it is adjacent to their municipality.
Any comments, Becky?
I am probably with Mike.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Pat, my question is just about process. If we were to turn it down, then they can appeal to the regular commission.
It automatically advances, no matter what.
Okay, so it automatically advances, no matter what action we take?
Yes.
And what would be the next step after that, then?
Well, the public hearing would be March nineteenth in the same room, meeting starts at nine AM.
I'll be there, but-
If, if it's approved or denied, either way, by the county commission, it would be published the next Monday in the paper, and you have twenty days to appeal that decision to the auditor and to take it to circuit court.
Okay, and what about this planned development design that has to come forward? If it got approval at the next level?
That would, it won't, I doubt it would make it in for the March meeting, since our deadline's Friday, so I'm guessing April, the fourth Monday of April, there would be the public hearing here, and we have to work that out with Hartford in their zoning board, because this would be the first time we would meet jointly, because, you know, this just got enacted in February, this joint plating area. So, but they would sit at the table and have, carry just as much weight on the design issues, you know, and everything that was talked about tonight, access issues, the bioswells, if they want to see two accesses or not, the width of the roads.
But there would be no change, the zoning would have already-
The zoning would already, but the design aspects, the drainage aspects, all of that, they would have full say in. And then again, it has to advance to the city council, county commission for the same.
Bonnie?
I agree with Mike. It's hard for me to approve something, especially with a new development in the City of Hartford. I would feel better knowing that they would have been along with some of this, rather than us trying to make that decision, setting a precedent. I don't like doing that either.
And I just want to make a comment too, in support of Mike's statement about the eligibility. You know, we, we fight nonstop with the farmers wanting to move their eligibility, add their eligibility, build a home without an eligibility, and so we're gonna take thirty acres, that even though it's in the comprehensive plan sometime down the road, it's not an orderly development of Hartford. We can see a long stretch of land that has not been developed into the city limits, has not been developed at all for anything other than egg, and we're gonna take thirty acres of land and add a hundred and fifty-seven housing eligibility's. So give me any farmer around that doesn't want to add a hundred and fifty-seven housing eligibility's to thirty acres of land after they already sold the eligibility's they had. You know, I think we really have to think about that, and that, you know, we don't have a sewer system, and, and I agree with Mike, you know, do we really want to set that precedent? And I think we only give you a recommendation, right?
Correct, you recommend to the county commission.
And so we will recommend approval or denial based on our motion.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Madam Chairman, I would say, if this were a mile or two in either direction, we wouldn't even be sitting here talking about this.
Half a mile, yeah.
Maybe half a mile. We wouldn't, it wouldn't even be considered, because they didn't have a sanitary sewer district and putting it together. And given all the reasons I stated before, I move for denial.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for denial. All in favor of denial, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? It's you and I, so, okay. We're done with that one? Item nine, um, good.
Five minutes.
Okay, five-minute restroom break, and then we'll go into this Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club. Get up and move on. I want to fill my water.
It purports to require baffling on the short-range bays at some future point, possibly. There's, there's no evidence that anything happened relative to the short-range bays that impacted any other property. We have berms surrounding all those bays, consistent with the berms on the sides of the longer-range bays, in most cases exceeding those. And there's no practical way of constructing baffles without building a concrete bunker over the whole area, which would be millions of dollars and completely impractical, and there would be no benefit to the public by requiring something that bizarre. Number, previous, number eleven of the planning people's recommendation, we have ten-foot berms around everything already. Previous, the planning people put several conditions on when it's to be opened. Basically, I rolled those into one and just said the ranges can't be opened to the public for more than four days a week, and the hours are limited to eight to sunset, except for the additional days that we get in the fall for hunter sighting. And I simplified that for clarity and to eliminate the redundancies. There's also a filing requirement that purports to require us to file a schedule of everything we're gonna do from, for the year in March. And while we have a pretty good idea what's gonna happen for the year, as far as which days we're gonna use, it's impractical and onerous to require that as a condition to use our property. Number fifteen purports to defer the responsibility of the planning and zoning people and this board to impose conditions at the time of an application to some later date. And that's not, that's not consistent with the zoning ordinance, which requires those conditions to be set at the time of application is filed. And it puts us under so much uncertainty, we could have somebody come and snivel about something every day of the week, and we'd be constantly coming before you without regard to our safe operation of the range. Number sixteen addresses criminal violations, which intentional damage of property is something that's already prohibited by criminal law. There's no evidence that the damage that is asserted as to those ranges came from, or from, to those towers, came from the direction of Big Sioux, and in fact, examination of the towers from the distance that we are allowed to look at them indicates that it came from multiple other directions other than our place. And so, since it's already addressed by criminal law and the fact that any other property owner certainly has recourse against whoever does the shooting without regard to the planning and zoning process, we think that's an inappropriate condition. Previous, number seventeen, renumbered nine, I changed that just for clarity. Basically, if you're sighting in a gun, you have to do it from a recognized firing point. I think that's the intent that was sought by the planning people, that there be a controlled environment under which sighting in occurs. Number eighteen, previously number eighteen on the next page, we have gates already, and those gates are locked, we don't have a problem with that. Number nineteen, renumbered eleven, we don't have any problem with hiding stuff from public view. Number twelve, previous number twenty, we already have restroom facilities that, and the wastewater system was designed to meet those conditions of the county and state regulations. Number twenty-one, I deleted that, the only light we have on the place is a farm-type yard light, right in the middle of the property, and it doesn't seem like the exterior lighting is really a point to be addressed on a conditional use permit. When it's just one light, it's basically there for security at night. Parking things, twenty-two, I struck that one because there's already enforcement mechanisms for parking rules already under the county ordinances, which we naturally have to meet anyway. Number twenty-three, we can't have, we left that one the way the planning people recommended. Twenty-four addressed building permits. The building permit section has its own enforcement mechanisms and, and requirements and penalties, so it's redundant and just leaves a trap for us with regard to the, to building permits. And we'll certainly comply with whatever is required on building permits. As far as I know, we've complied with those things. If there's an area that something needs to be corrected, or a permit needs to be obtained, we'll certainly get that, because it's required by the existing ordinance, whether, whether it's on a conditional use or not, we have to do that. Signage, again, they're, that's self-effectuating, there's rules on that, that apply to, to conditional and non-conditional uses, and I will certainly comply with whatever, whatever's out there. We have a sign saying basically no trespassing unless there's a range officer present, and the only other signage we have are safety rules that are posted within our facility. So I don't see that there's any reason for that. The final one deals with the permits, and I scanned this in, which explains part of the editing, it didn't come out quite as well as I would have liked on the OCR. But we don't want the existing permits repealed, but we like them subsumed into this new one that covers everything. So it sort of addressed your concern about repeal of the existing ones. If they're just subsumed into this last one with the conditions that I recommended and are acceptable to our club, we would, we would agree to consideration of the whole site plan, rather than just what we applied for, which were the additional bays. I'd like to point out that we've already done a lot of remediation with baffles on the fifty-yard, and the two-hundred-yard, which cost us about thirty thousand dollars, we're looking at probably another ten thousand dollars for baffles on the hundred-yard, which, while we don't think they're necessary based on the layout of the facility, in a spirit of trying to compromise and reduce some concerns, we're willing to do that. By having until 2015 to do that, we think we can swing it for, with the money with, without a great deal of difficulty. And, you know, this is a club that's member-operated with a relatively small budget, relatively small dues, and we endeavor to do our range in a very safe way in every respect. And I think if you look at what I proposed as alternatives or slight variations on what the planning people, and you can find that as item number three in your folders, we would be willing, without, I guess, to accept looking at the overall site plan. In the absence of that, we certainly don't waive any rights that we have for damages or other recourse at whatever level we need to take it to. So I'd be happy to ask, answer questions now, if you'd like to wait until after words, that'd be fine too, or both times.
I have a couple of questions based on the changes that you made, because in Ryan's recommendation, he said there should be a range officer on each active firing line at all times. You said that there would be one officer for the long-range base. Ryan, did you really mean that there should be one on each firing line? Okay, so when you changed that, you changed the essence of what he had asked for.
Well, I guess if that's what his real intent was, it makes it very impractical to have to have six range officers. It's difficult on a volunteer organization to-
Is someone adequately able to manage six sites at one time?
Well, if you look at where the bays are, they're kind of around a central area, so one person can watch all those areas without a great deal of difficulty. You know, if there's an active shooting competition going, there's going to also be the people that are working with those shooters. But to require an additional range officer that oversees all those is impractical, and I don't know that it adds that much-
So you disagree with his thing? I mean, you said you were clarifying it, I just wanted to-
Well, I guess I, I saw that as a possible reading, but I didn't want to believe that that was what their intent was.
The other thing is that you did agree with the ranges shall not be open to the public for more than four days, but according to Ryan's thing, there was no shooting from club members or the public allowed on the remaining three days. Do you agree with that?
That's correct.
Then I would for that to get left in there then.
It's like on the off-season, when the range is not officially open to the public, if someone is a range officer with requisite experience, you can have access to the facility and use it one of the days that's allowed under the conditional use permit, whether or not it's formally open. But it doesn't exceed the number of days that are permitted already.
Okay, and you don't want to provide the schedule to Ryan? I'm not really sure, because you feel that's onerous or something?
Well, it's, do you know what you're going to do all next year?
Well, I think if I was running a business, I probably would be able to say, and I understand you might have rain delays or something, but you can incorporate rain days into a schedule too, I would think.
Well, it doesn't read that way, and I'm not sure how that fits into the conditional use thing. As long as we're not open, we're operating the facility at more than the number of days that we are allowed, I don't know what it adds to the public safety or health or anything.
Just hold you accountable to the days, probably, but anyway.
You know, we keep logs, the range officers sign in, and there's logs of every time that there's somebody there.
All right, that was my question.
So, I mean, if somebody wanted to check, they can look at the log.
Okay. I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
This is just a further clarification, that Ben, you're saying there would be one range officer for all five pistol bays?
Correct. And there would be one range officer for all three long-range bays.
So two range officers.
If both of them are open. So if only the pistol bays are open, there'd be one range officer back there. If only the front ranges were open, there'd be just one range officer for that. If they aren't open, there'd be no point in having a range officer back there, or up front for that matter. I mean, most of the time, the 100's going to be open, and if there's not one open, it's going to be the back, short-range ones won't be open, so. But it'd be pointless to have a range officer back there if it's not open.
Well, you only have to have range officers for people that are shooting.
No. We just wanted to simplify and clarify that.
I just would like to say a couple of things. One is, there's sure a lot of info in your revisions, and I'm not sure cursory reading of it is sufficient for me to absorb all the data that's in there. But I would like to say that, you know, the verbal assurance about the pistol bays, I absolutely reject. As a county commissioner, I might tell you, you don't have to pay your property taxes, but don't take that to the bank. There is processes, there is documentation, and that verbal assurance, I assure you, doesn't hold much water with me. But I do think that your modified conditions certainly have staggered, and I appreciate the work that that took. I'm just afraid that I may not be able to fully comprehend them just in this last 20 minutes. And one final question I would ask, I guess, after my remarks, is, do you guys have insurance for, you know, accidental projectiles leaving the range?
Absolutely, we have insurance.
Thank you.
Any questions with the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's additional time, did you have people that wanted to speak on your behalf?
Some of the members would like to express support-
We took up quite a bit at this time.
Okay. Well, you know, we didn't want to use all the time if we didn't need it, so.
Thank you for allowing us to be here. Mr. Haverley, my name is Don Ochsurska, and 4501 South Ashbrook, Sioux Falls, Mayhaw County. Mr. Haverley is a much more amiable person than I am, and that's the reason why he came first. And in that regard, I wanted to draw your attention to some recommendations that we have. I don't know, were they in the package, John, that we gave them? These recommendations?
Yeah, but they're in there too.
I think they're in your package. You will see, there's from the United States District Court Probation Department, and from various entities of the government and so forth. And Mr. Michael Ryder is here presently, he could address any of his recommendations and so forth. These recommendations are from ICE and from a nonprofit called ANGUS, A-N-G-U-S. And, you know, the club is a very good club, and it has been doing a lot of good things in this community. And before John and I, we're good friends, we went to law school together. And before we joined Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club, we'd go out and shoot. I remember standing up on the bridge over the Sioux River and shooting into the water. There's no other place to shoot that we know of. And we're shooting, and finally someone said, you know, there's a place to shoot, Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club, you don't have to do that anymore, it's a nice, safe place to go. And then we joined. And it's the best thing we ever did. We enjoy shooting, just like maybe some of you. And certainly, a lot of us who live here in South Dakota, who were born and raised here in South Dakota, and live and chose to live here, we like to shoot. And we should have a nice, safe place around Sioux Falls. I mean, after all, I went to school in Sioux Falls, in high school and so forth, and there are very little things to do, as opposed to the Black Hills, or take Pierre, the river, and so on. The guys like to go out and shoot, and the women too. There's a lot of women that go out there, be surprised. And there's a lot of us that go out there and shoot, and we have a place to go on a nice weekend day, go out and shoot. And when my son joined the military, before he went to boot camp, I had him come out to the gun range, and several of the guys there took him aside and taught him the fundamentals of shooting AR-15, which he had to shoot in boot camp. And they did this, there's no complaining, they just did it, because it's the right thing to do. And my son is thanked many times, because when he went to boot camp, he had a one-up on a lot of people, because he knew how to shoot an AR-15, he knew how to take it down, and he knew how to clean it. And these are the kinds of things that these guys out here at Big Sioux offer to the general public. And, you know, the way things are looking, a lot of gun ranges have gone members-only and precluded from the general public from coming out and doing these things. Big Sioux hasn't done that. And I ask respectfully, and with all due respect to all of you, that you allow our petition to add the pistol bays and accept Mr. Haverley's recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? We have a few minutes left.
My name is Charles Heck, I'm the president of the Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club, I live at 1608 South Glendale, Sioux Falls. I just wanted to make some clarification, I think there's confusion on Ryan's part and your part. As far as range officers, when the five bays, one, two, three, four, five, if they're shooting in there, we have a range officer. Now, when I say range officer, I include instructor, because Mr. Ritter here might be back there in one of those bays with five or six students. He's the range officer and the instructor, he's in control, he tells them when to shoot and when not to shoot. Okay? So when Ryan discussed having a range officer in each one of those bays where there's active shooting, that's how we run that and have always run that. You might see a videotape where it just shows the shooter shooting some things, but what it doesn't show is the range officers behind that. And generally, in the USPSA shooting, there's two range officers, one immediately by the shooter and another behind them, to ensure what's going on is within the rules, that nobody's shooting out of the range and that kind of stuff. The other one is up on the five, the three long-range bays, is that we feel one range officer can cover that. That range officer is not out there to tell people, commence firing, you know, or cease firing. We rely on the people on the ranges to get together and decide when they're going to stop firing. We have a safety system of turning on red lights that are flashing when anybody goes downrange, and we have a distinct rule that we strictly enforce, that nobody touch guns when people go downrange, for two reasons, obviously safety. If I go down 200 yards, I'm walking back, I don't want to see somebody messing with his gun up there, because that gun is still pointed downrange. And the action is open, all of those things are made safe. Okay? So that range officer up there may have the responsibility to check somebody in, fill out a membership, come out and check the ranges to see that people are calling ceasefires, because there are, when we get really busy, and these guys are in a hurry to get sighted in, they don't want to stop shooting to allow somebody to go downrange to check their target. So we have spotting scopes that we lend people, so that they can stay up there, check their targets. They don't have to shoot three shots with iron sights and then run down 200 yards or 100 yards and check their targets. So we try to get everybody along, and for the most part, these are responsible sportsmen, and they do get along. Very rarely have we had any situation where we have to go out there and, how would you say, guide somebody to the behavior. Now, when we get busy in the fall, our own rule is that we're going to have two range officers out there. And just because you have people that need that much help, okay? And you have people coming in and getting checked in and all of that kind of stuff, and things explained to them, you check in, I'm going to ask you, have you shot here before? And if you haven't, you're going to get the quarter tour, you know? We don't send people out there without knowing our rules, and they're not extraordinary. The other thing is that we would like to run the 100-yard range without the baffles until the date we put them up. But it's going to be closed to the public. We're going to run that range for events only with a range officer, dedicated range officer on that range. Now, if we get busy in the fall, we need that to provide enough shooting spots for people who want to sight in. And at that point, we also have our own policy after these incidences, and we shut down that range for a while, we shut our whole range down to get the baffles up, is that we're going to have a range officer on there until that range is baffled.
Mr. Heck, I have a question. Explain certification of a range officer briefly.
Okay, presently, if you want to be a range officer, you volunteered for it, all our range officers are volunteers, and you come out and you shadow an existing range officer. We explain the rules to you, and depending on your background, if you are law enforcement or you have military background and are familiar to ranges, one episode of training might be enough. But oftentimes, people want two, and we'd like them to have two, and then we ask the range officer you shadow, is this guy good enough? Does he know the rules? And more importantly, does he have the personality? Because you have to be able to go out there and tell these people, you're not doing that right, and we don't operate that way. You have to have the personality to go out there and say, you don't touch your guns when people are downrange. That's our rule. Anybody, we have a sign out there, top one, range officer is always in charge. And that doesn't mean he's always responsible for everybody, but his word goes. And that's pretty much common on every range out there. Now, we have Larry Swenson, past president, down winters in Arizona.
Yeah.
The NRA does have range officer certification programs, and he is going to take the one-day class, so he can become a certified range officer, and then he's going to take the two-day class, so that he can be an instructor of range officers. We bring him back, and we're going to upgrade that certification process to include a little maybe more documentation. But if we don't think you can go out there and safely run the range, you're not out there by yourself, for sure.
Just one other quick question. When I was out there with one of the guys that gave a tour, and the question I had was on the gate, how often do you change the lock? That was a padlocked gate, as he was looking through his bifocals, looking at the number, thinking, okay, so how many people get that number? It's just like, I'm starting to think of Jim Keys with grade school basketball. All of a sudden, there's keys all over-
All over the place. Last year with, you know, closing down, we did change the combination a couple times. Normally, we change it at the beginning of the year, and we give the combination to the range officers. If we have new range officers, like I say, they got to go out and shadow, they don't open up, they don't shut down. It's easy enough to shut down, spin the lock. But that's who gets the combination, is the people who are basically running the range. And incidentally, we were having some problems with the gate being left open. I had a non-member friend of mine go out there expecting to shoot when we were closed last summer, and he goes out there and the gate's open. And he calls me up and says, what's going on? And I says, check the back bays. He says, there's nobody back there. I says, well, sorry, you can't shoot out there if we don't have a range officer. Would you please exit and lock the gate behind you? And we had a couple instances, and I'm going, all right, you know what? And I was starting to think, well, maybe somebody does have the combination, somebody we don't want to have the combination. So we put up a game camera on a post. We've had no problems since, right up at the front gate. Game camera takes pictures of motion in front of the camera. Okay? Any other questions?
I just wanted to clarify, you said that you have a range officer for each short-range bay whenever there's a shooter present? So there's one at each bay whenever shooters are present at that bay?
Yes. We might only be using three, but there's going to be three range officers.
And then you're willing to have one range officer for the long-range bays whenever active shooters are present?
Correct.
And you're going to have an additional range officer for the 100-yard bay until the baffles are installed, whenever that's in operation?
The only thing that'll be used for most of the summer is actually competitions. And this is one of the reasons we don't want to make this into just a sighting place, we want to be able to shoot positions in prone position, standing position, sitting position. And I think that's actually covered. But those are competition events, and there's a range officer running them. He tells them when to shoot, when to start, when to stop, all that kind of stuff. We don't have any problems with those events.
Wait a minute, I have a question, I'm sorry. You clarified part of that for Ms. O'Hara. When I was out there, I also got a nice tour from one of your members, but I failed to ask about the bar that goes in place, so I didn't really get a chance to visualize that, because you just talked about shooting from that 100-yard range, like in a prone position. So then is that a bar that comes out of the trailer, or?
Okay, here, originally, and I don't know that that bench particularly belongs there. We did switch them around, and right now, that bar would not be required by our existing or old conditions. But yeah, there was a bar there, and once you put your rifle there on the sandbags and stuff like that, the idea was that- and stuff like that, the idea was that the bar couldn't, would not allow the barrel to go up so that the shot would go over the berms. So now on the new ones, and I thought about this, I mean, we looked at that condition, I thought about this, and I think there's a way of putting an adjustable bar for somebody or actually two people in the 12-foot bay to be able to shoot underneath it so that they can't lift their rifles up and go over that berm. And this is one of the things we really do want because if all we are is sighting, it's kind of like turning a golf course into a driving range if all you can do is sight in. We want a whole golf course. We want to be able to hold competitions and positions and all that kind of stuff.
Is there one other question, Mr. Heck? As you bring up positions and all that, because I was, I was basically at this position I'm out there and I kind of got down on my knee and I was shooting the thing down prone position.
Prone position.
And then all of a sudden, you can see the blue sky.
Which range were you on? 200 yard?
Because you're so much lower.
Right, exactly. The geometry is very difficult to handle.
There are ways to prevent that.
The way you prevent that is the way we've prevented it over 30 years. We don't shoot prone on the 200. Everybody knows that rule. Now, on the 100, I don't think we ever had that condition applied to us. And you look at our original conditional use, it's, they put up these bars and the condition was if a problem developed, you've got to put up a baffle. And I think that was in the 1982 condition. Nobody shoots prone on the 200.
All right. Now we'll go to the oppositions since we've had our.
Well, we had a lot of questions. Can I add one more?
I guess a couple of minutes. You do get your 10 minutes at the end, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Is that okay? I mean, I don't want to shorten your time.
No.
Okay.
My name is Kelly Valness. My family lives at 4326 260th Street near Brandon. Our home is located just southwest of the Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club. I feel like you put this 30-minute restriction on because of my last speech.
No, because of the things we had. It wasn't for any one person.
Well, I'm trying to condense it down as much as I possibly can. One thing I would like to say before I even get started, just in rebuttal to their lawyer, if this is covered by criminal law, we wouldn't be here because we tried that. So we first came before you on September 24th of 2012 after filing a complaint against the Big Sioux Rifle Club. If you will recall from that meeting, we presented you with binders, photos, and films supporting our concerns with the safety to us and our neighbors from the Big Sioux Rifle Club. If I could quickly recap our complaint. On June 4th, 2011, our home was shot. One shot hit the exterior wall of my kitchen and the other ricocheted off the back wall of the garage. We called the police who filed a report but directed us to contact the Big Sioux, which we did. Several board members came to our home, acknowledged at that time responsibility, and told us they would contact the NRA for a certified inspection and do what they needed to keep us safe. The inspection that's enclosed in their application is dated November of 2011 after that shooting and acknowledges in that report that the reason Inspector Bruce Plate was called was because of this first shooting and yet the club now denies that. The club did not follow through with the suggested improvements and so we come to May 16th, 2012, when our son Derek was working down by the pond, which lies approximately 50 yards north of our home between us and the rifle ranges. A bullet whizzed by Derek's head and he dove under the great old park nearby and dialed 911 as several other bullets whizzed by. The deputy came and spoke with us, then spoke with the Rifle Club, at which point they denied everything. The deputy came back and we all went down by the pond to see what could be found. The deputy found a hole in the canvas topper and a bullet mark on the roll bar of our UTV, which was parked about 20 feet further southwest of Derek at head height. The deputy also found that bullet on the ground below. The deputy went back to the Rifle Club and now their story changed. A boy was sighting in his gun with his dad and the sight was off and it was an accident. While considering he had to shoot left in over a 30-foot berm, it would seem unlikely that dad, the range officer, or the boy would not have noticed how high he was directing fire since your arm would sit at approximately this height to shoot over and hit where it did. How did this happen? Well, although the rifle range had originally admitted this fact because it was a violation of their conditional use permit, the range officer was not there. Larry Swenson admitted in testimony before the county commissioners that the range officer had left the grounds to follow someone out of the range driveway while the shooting was going on. During our investigation for our presentation to you, we discovered that the Big Sioux Rifle Club had built without a permit, another five-course live-action tactical range that serves numerous live-action shoots almost every weekend during the summer. We showed you film of the running and dodging going on during these shoots and also that nearly 19,000 rounds per day are shot during these competitions. This does not include practice rounds for the tactical ranges. We also showed you our neighbors and our locations along with our original petition. After our presentation to you that day, you, the commission, decided the following. There should be a discontinuation of the tactical range until a conditional use permit is applied for and obtained. There should be a required discontinuation of shooting from all positions besides the bench until further safety precautions are approved and implemented. No shooting on the 100-yard range until a baffle is installed and a safety plan and design needs to be developed with the neighbors prior to returning here before you. So the Big Sioux immediately filed an appeal. We went before the county commission three times and they made a decision to send it back to planning and zoning to either revoke the original permit since the Big Sioux was arguing that you couldn't force them to amend under current statutes, or if the Big Sioux would voluntarily amend their own permit to comply, they would then avert revocation. The tactical range was to be a separate issue, applied for separately because it was never an approved range. They have argued that somehow verbal permission was given and that should stand. But I would note that you have said yourselves that verbal permission would never be allowed. And I would argue that the history of the range has shown that Big Sioux has come before you for the smallest things, change in hour and days. And yet they're asking you to believe that they thought verbal permission sufficed for investing in and building a five-course tactical range. It doesn't make sense. So instead of self-amending as per your specifications, implying separately for the tactical ranges, this has all been combined into one. You were given copies of our new petition. Most of the neighbors listed got together to have a meeting to discuss what specifically would make us feel safe after what has happened. You also have a letter from Sweetland Construction, two emails from landlords, landowners who live elsewhere, and I believe letters from WAPA and the US Department of Energy stating that we are all against the five new action, live-action ranges. The ranges encroach on an easement of the Department of Energy. They offer little if any safety. The noise and number of shots greatly exceed the expectations of the original permit and the caliber of guns can range from shotguns and pistols to rifles, which can shoot over two miles, all while moving. I have, you were given the petition. I have the petition here. Don't know if you want me to read through the petition or if you want to ask some questions about the petition we gave you. I mean, it's certainly up to you what you'd like, how you'd like to do that. The petition was a separate letter that should have been provided to you.
I've read it, I don't need you to hear it.
I don't, I think we've all had a chance to read what was in our package.
Okay. I think the only thing that I wanted to address in the petition is item F. This portion just needs to be amended a bit. When Kurt, my husband, first spoke with Bruce Plate, the NRA inspector, he spoke to him a second time and Bruce indicated that, no, he did not know about the second shooting when he made this report. This report was prior to that. And he clarified that yes, he did look at all the four ranges. When asked why, the only mention we find is on page one, as a fourth range, he apologized and said he couldn't answer that because we didn't hire him. The report, however, did state the following. Acknowledgement of the shot in the house is the reason the inspector was called. On paragraph marked number two, Mr. Heck indicated the instructor was also serving as the range officer and that he was not using the established firing line. There was discuss as to how to avoid shots from leaving the range and Bruce Plate suggested no blue-sky baffles on all of the ranges. The Big Sioux was then advised to contact a construction engineer before they begin anything. The final statement was a range safety officer should never be a participant and I believe that is addressed in the staff recommendations. One of the most important statements made to us from Bruce Plate in our conversation is that the NRA requires that a range has to contain its bullets inside their grounds. The second page, petition addresses the three original ranges and with, you know, our suggested provisions, we're fine with them. They were, we don't have any problem with the original ranges. We too have an NRA range design management manual. We have copied the applicable pages for your review, which is the green binder that you have. I'm not going to go through all of this either. We highlighted several things in there, specifically community relations, sensitivity concerns for health and safety. We have the pages marked with the range of the bullets, how far different guns can shoot. If you go to the last section on the outdoor action ranges, it basically says on, I think it's 2-99, because of wide variation of angles of fire, projectile containment must be laid out in a half circle, 180 degrees, with backstop side berms with overhead and ground baffles appreciably reducing land requirements. In conclusion and again, we are not anti-gun. We believe in the Second Amendment. This is not about guns, it is about accountability. Over the past year and a half, we have been directed and misdirected. We have paid legal fees and spent hours trying to gather enough proof and information to somehow be protected from being shot at. And not just us, but all our neighbors in the joint business and others who have been subjected to this same sort of issue are vested in this decision. We are asking you, the commission, to set forth strong guidelines of safety with inspections and protocols to ensure the conditions of this permit are met always. We have talked to police officers and legislators and they have also the same thing. Somehow you need to idiot-proof these ranges because there will always be that someone who either doesn't follow the rules or just playing messes out. And if you're going to have a business of lethal entertainment, entertainment, a business that could kill someone, someone needs to be accountable whether civilly or criminally or both. If the club does not care enough to want to keep us safe, then we need you to ensure that they are forced to keep us safe. And I just want to make one other note just by listening to everyone that spoke tonight. When you were speaking about the Meadows development and all the presentation that they had and all the staff interviews, talking to the city and talking to the DNR and all of these things, why aren't we given the same background for the recommendations? Why aren't they talking to the people? This is a lethal business. There are people, there are people at stake. It's not a housing development. There are people at stake. Why don't we have to take this sort of preliminary action before a recommendation is made? Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak?
My name's Keith Jones, 25968, going 83rd Avenue, just west of the existing range. And my, there's two ponds on the pasture, one's in line with the long range and the other is right over the hill from Tactical Range 4 and 5. And my daughter Haley and my wife used to take my big black lab down to the ponds, throw sticks, chase ducks and geese. And since this happened, she won't go over no place, stays in the yard. She hears shots up at gun range, she runs in the house. She's nine years old. I mean, she should be able to have access to the property. I mean, there's no reason. We'd just go four-wheeler riding up on the pasture, in the old pit, stuff. She don't do that anymore. You know, when I was here before, I want to clarify something Mr. Heck said. I had went up, when they were in the tactical range and sitting on my four-wheeler on our property, I didn't specify that. Mr. Heck said I was sitting on their berm, which I was 30 feet from the property line because I went back and measured it from where I was sitting. And he says I was sitting on, standing on the property, or on their berm while I was sitting. And there's no, around the tactical range on the west side, north side, there's no trees, nothing, just top of the berm. Well, the top of the berm on number four range on the west side is even the top of my pasture, that's where I was sitting. And their range officers came up, told me to leave because I might get hit for the ricochet. Now, he just stated that they're safe because they're 10 or 15 feet. I mean, that's somehow, you don't jive, they're only range officers say the bullets are leaving. Otherwise, they wouldn't ask me to leave. I also work for Sweetland's and we're going to be mining that area here just in a few, just a few years, which will be right in line with the number four and five ranges. And there's no way I'm going to have my guys down in there working with heavy equipment and being shot at the same time. Because I got mining inspectors that come off twice a year to inspect. They ought to be inspected at least twice a year. Just walk in on them with, when they're shooting, just kind of sense. And I don't think on that 100-yard range, I don't think they should be shooting without a baffle up there. I mean, that's just kind of sense. They're shooting right towards my house or pretty close to my house. I don't need any bullets flying around my house either. That's all I got to say. Thank you. Any questions?
Can I have any questions, please, ma'am?
Get your place right straight west there, Dave.
Yep, just straight west.
I've got a picture that I'd like to have you see. And that's their building, their office building. I'm standing right on my line. And when they built that building, I never could see it. And now you can see the whole bay almost. And they're shooting that way and we had some old cars there and bullets went through the windshield. I've never ever seen anything. And my husband goes down there and he cuts grass and cuts trees and stuff like that. And he hears bullets zinging. And my daughter is coming up from Florida and she's going to move down there in a camper for a couple months. And her life is going to be. And her life is going to be pretty dangerous if they don't build that up. And I know when they first started, they couldn't open that only on Wednesdays at noon until dark, Saturday and Sunday. And then they started on September, then they'd have one extra day. So I just think that they've got, before you can even accept anything else, they've got to build that up more so it keep the bullets inside. And I am not against guns either. But they've got to build that up. I mean, we can see that so plainly right at our, down at the old house. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Ma'am, is this looking from the south? From the south, right?
Is that the south? Yes. And you can see how, how you can see that. And you could, at first you couldn't see the flagpole and the yard lights and everything. And that's how that burn and stuff is all went down. And they haven't even tried fixing it at all. And then another thing is, is how do you know when you got gray, those range people? They could just say anybody was a range person, right? So how do you know?
That's a good question.
Yeah. They've got to have something to, ID or something. If I go down there, I want to see it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm Dennis Stirk. I live at four-eighty-three-thirty-six-two-hundred-and-fifty-ninth street.
Are you on that picture?
What's that?
Are you on this picture?
Oh yeah, it is exactly a half mile straight north. And the tactical range are shooting directly towards my place. And I am a hunter myself and I have guns, rifles, pistols and shotgun. I know for a fact that if you're in a moving position with a pistol, your accuracy is very far off. And according to what I understand, they're in moving, running, walking while they're shooting. And their berms are not high enough for what they could miss if somebody does not shoot great. And a bullet will travel a half mile very easily. Now, it would have to go up the hill because there is hill in between the two of us, but they would be shooting basically up that hill to get out of the range itself. And they don't have a permit for this, a written permit for the tactical range. I do not think they should be using it until they have a permit and it has been passed by some inspector of some kind to make it totally legal. Go ahead.
Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm John Malloy. I work for Concom materials. I'm the agriculture division manager. And I sent a letter in and I just wanted to touch a couple of points on that. I agree with Dennis and Kelly said that I think there needs to be some kind of certification process for the range officers. And I certainly think there needs to be more officers. Mr. Heck also talked about safety on the range, but his safety comments were directed at the shooters and he didn't really address any safety concerns for the neighbors. And I think that's what you folks need to take into consideration. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm just wasn't sure. I had some questions written down, but I wasn't sure if I wanted to ask them first or last. So, okay, you guys, applicants have another 10 minutes.
I'd like to thank you for carefully considering both our actual application and our proposed conditions. I just want to address a few of the points that were raised by some of the other speakers. Criminal law doesn't generally deal with negligent or allegedly negligent acts. The criminal law I was referring to was the intentional acts. And the only way that one of those towers can be shot is with an intentional act. Just like stop sign out on the county road can't be shot by accident, it's by an intentional act. So, and we're not responsible for somebody shooting a stop sign on the county road. But if we're allowing a criminal act on our thing, we're certainly going to report it. That's the way we do things. The, Mrs. Valnis made some reference to comment in the NRA report. And if you look at our original submission on the application for the ranges, you'll see the correction from Mr. Heck as far as what was said relative to the alleged incidents. Mrs. Valnis will take a comment out of context and exaggerate or misconstrue it with regard to the alleged incidents on the nine-millimeter. There was a comment relative to what the level of noise might have been and that related to the rifle. The nine-millimeter, once it was identified as a nine-millimeter projectile over there, we were able to identify what a possible cause was, which was the person fiddling with the gun at an inappropriate angle. Now with the new baffles on the 50-yard range, there's no way that that incident can recur no matter how careless somebody was at that point. The NRA report, we ordered that promptly when we became aware of an issue. It took them a considerable amount of time to get the report to us. And we certainly implemented many of the, or exceeded many of the concerns that were raised in that. We've been there for 30-plus years and never had issues with projectiles going off, off-range. What an issue was raised about being able to see the range building now that you could never see it before. If you look at our site drawing, you can see the measurements that were made of the various berms. The berms are as tall as they ever were. At one time, we had kind of a shack there, which was just like an old farm grain rebuilding from, that was pulled off a farm someplace. That was our range house until we built the steel building, which is considerably taller than the old range shack. So naturally, you can see something that's taller when you couldn't see the shorter shack that we had before. We certainly are concerned beyond just the shooters. The care and control that we attempt to exercise over anybody that uses our range is directed towards the safety of the people on the range and people off the range, which is why we already constructed the berms that we did, the baffles on the 50 and 200-yard range and why we're willing to add the berm on the 100-yard range. And like I said, we're willing to do those things as an offer and compromise and not a waiver of what our other rights are, just because we're trying to be reasonable about this. We're not trying to exaggerate anything. We're not trying to minimize, use extraordinary minimization of somebody's concerns, but we think we're being very reasonable and we've done everything we can to be reasonable and safe on this range. And I thank you for your consideration.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Or a couple of them actually. You know, is there any limit to the type, strength of, I'm not going to say the right words. I'm familiar with guns, but not film, I'm going to have to say, but like type of guns that can be used, you know, because the tactical and action shooting gun ranges. So the pistol base, I was assuming that, you know, you just do like target practice or something too, but I'm probably wrong. Is there any limit to the power of?
Generally not. As far as I know, we've never allowed like 50 caliber guns, which are like the sniper rifles they use over in Iraq. But otherwise, the guns we use now are no different in power than the .3006 of 1906. In fact, most of the ones like the, if you're shooting an AR-15, it's a round that's a third the size, a third the bullet weight. The other guns, there's really no difference from, since there've been certified guns to what are available now as far as power.
I think we all agree ammunition should never leave your site. I mean, you only have eleven and a half acres there and you don't ever want ammunition leaving the site, right? So, and I guess I'm wondering, we, like the pistol base, we don't have, other than the berms, you don't have a lot to prevent ammunition from leaving.
On the right side, the west side of those, there's a very tall berm. You can see that on the range. And you know, you don't anticipate anything going beyond those things. We don't anticipate that. But if someone's putting themselves in an area where it would be inadvisable to be, even though we don't think it would go there.
Like on their own property? You're not talking about that, right?
Yeah, yes. Well, it's, if you see somebody playing in the street, that's a small child, you tell them to get off the street, whether or not they have a right to be on the street or not, just because that's the same thing to do.
You do believe, you agree with me that it's your responsibility to make sure ammunition stays within your property?
Yes, yes, I do. I also think that people shouldn't unnecessarily put themselves in a dangerous position or potentially dangerous.
I did ask one question that I really don't know. Like I know you guys self-train your range officers and all of that. Do you have somebody sign that? Do they wear some kind of identification?
There's vests that say "range officer" on them. There's a sign-in sheet that the range officer or range officers sign into when they take over. Then when the subsequent ranger, typically it's a half a day session you sign up for. And then when the successor range officer comes on, they sign on to the login sheet and they log everybody that comes into the range and identify, you know, if they're a member or non-member. And so it is controlled and we're aware of who the range officers are, so.
And the range officer would always have this vest on, then?
They're going to either have that, they're going to have the range officer hat on. I don't remember.
Badges, we got badges.
We got badges, okay.
Okay, so they always have either a vest, a hat and a badge.
There's something that's going to clearly identify them as a range officer.
All right. Anybody else have questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
Do you think we need to put any limits on the type of firearms that are allowed or not?
I definitely think you can, you can add something.
I wouldn't know what to put in there.
If somebody's going to say over a .338, then that's something that we had, we put on the rifle range that is south of Humble.
Why, he made a really big deal about not having over a certain something, which I didn't know what he was talking about.
I have a question for you.
Yeah?
There's a comment about encroaching on easement for the power company is, what's the status of that?
Well, I talked with, I believe his name is Bruce, with the power company. And the material that the Valnises and the residents had supplied us so that they were in favor and had requested that the ranges be shut down, that is not the case. I talked to them and they say, was it appropriate that they built over the easement? No, but were they in the stages of making sure that they reclaim the property to what it was before? That wasn't necessarily what he was saying either. But he did tell me is if they were going forward, would they allow all of them ranges to be within their easement? And he said, probably not. So, I mean, he's not saying he doesn't want them shut down, that isn't what he said at all, but I guess that's why when I called them, I asked what kind of, what type of condition, what type of feedback do you give me that we're able to put on this permit? And that's why there's the condition, the two conditions on there, 16 and 17, which the big Sioux has decided then at this point to strike 16 and kind of rephrase 17. So we have been in touch with them. I guess they're not favorable of anybody building any type of structures or having people underneath their easements or on their easements, so.
I'm not fully thinking I understand that.
Madam Chair, are you able to show better on the map where their, of the proposed site, where the, where their easement is? That's where the power line is? Yeah. And they're thirty foot, they've got thirty foot.
Well, I do not have a map where there it is, but it's a 50-foot, I believe it's a 50-foot easement that runs this direction, north and south, along these bays.
Under their wires?
That's right. So the things that would, my understanding is bay three, the storage building and bay four are within that, within that easement. But I can't, you know, give you 100% without, we don't have access to their easements and isn't something that they provided us, other than saying that they do have their easement there.
I have a question for Mr. Heck if I might ask him.
Sure. Mr. Heck, are you willing to answer a question?
My question is basically with ammunition. I know that there's special ammunition that they use, for example, for people inside airplanes that will not go completely through a wall, for example. I think that I've been told if I were to shoot a sheet rock wall, it would go through the wall and not through the first part and not through the second. Wouldn't that be a safer type of ammunition to use on these pistol bases with tens of thousands of rounds being fired over a few hours?
It would be. I can't deny that. It's called fragmentation ammunition and it's.
Frangible?
Frangible.
Hand guns only.
It's basically, yeah, frangible. And there's various different types in what they do, but yes, the object is for them to break up when they hit something solid.
Mr. Bark, may I explain to you about the?
This is a much more expert on this.
Yeah, I would be happy to hear it for the chair.
Is that okay, ma'am? My name is Mike Ryder. I live at two-seven-six-eight-five-four-eighty-third Avenue, Canton, South Dakota. The frangible rounds that we're talking about are actually, traditional rounds are made out of lead, mostly with a copper jacket. And the rounds that you're talking about, they actually have a, what is called a pre-fragmented jacket. And what it does is it begins to disintegrate when it hits a piece of drywall, when it hits something solid. Okay, but a frangible round is made of compressed copper, compressed copper powder, okay? And it's punched into a mold, which puts it into a bullet shape, which allows it to be fired. But if a frangible round hits something solid, it immediately turns to powder. Boom. A lot of indoor ranges have a requirement for frangible rounds because they're non-toxic. You can shoot 300,000 frangible rounds and get the same lead exposure as you do for one traditional lead round. The problem with frangible is extremely expensive. That's, that's the biggest thing. Yeah, the concept is absolutely spot on as far as, you know, safety, minimizing overpenetration, minimizing ricochet, but they're extremely cost prohibitive and you would have a lot of.
And you would have a lot of people, ammunition is extremely hard to come by right now anyway the way it is, no matter what it is. But fragile even more so, and the costs are going through the roof. So that would decry the, or was just a crazy amount of-
Just maybe I'll thank you.
Yes. Did that help you?
It did.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions for me?
Are we open questions? Are we?
Do we have any other questions?
As long as he's a, kind of an ammunition expert, I do have one. So, the different caliber of weapons?
Yes.
You know, I think they mentioned that sometimes maybe there would be a limit of a point three thirty-eight. And I, I mean, we have guns in our house that my husband and stuff use for critters, but, so what size would that be, and what size are usually used shot at these types of ranges, or needed for officer training?
Officer training? That's a very, very good question. Officer training, normally, and I'm not sure what our officers have here in the county and the city and things like that, but most patrol rifles are two twenty-three caliber, which is like what I believe Chuck was talking about earlier, is a small round, it's point two-two-three inches in diameter, the bullet is. It travels extremely fast, but it's very, very light. Our attorney that was speaking for us earlier was talking about the thirty caliber round is point three oh inches in diameter, and it's probably three times as heavy as the two-two-three round. The two-two-three rounds have a tendency, yes, they can, if they are fired in a certain trajectory, any round can travel a long ways. But if you're in a controlled situation, you're shooting at the berm, you're shooting at the protection, which is the stopping device, which is the big pile of dirt that we're shooting at when we're on them. The only round that's in existence that I know of right now that can penetrate any type of berm structure like that is the fifty caliber brownie machine gun round. We do not allow those out of a range. The three thirty-eight Lapua, which is another very large caliber, high-power round, is also not allowed out there, and it's another one of those big long-range sniper rounds. Most generally, we do CMP matches out there, and again, that's back to the traditional thirty-out-six round that's been very popular and has been around for over a hundred years, so. For law enforcement training, you're gonna look at a lot of pistol bullets, nine millimeter, excuse me. I'm the kid, by the way, that flunked speech class in high school, so me standing up here and, you know, doing all this is kind of crazy. But the smaller caliber rounds is what you're gonna see most often in law enforcement training and with general populace at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I think I'm gonna close the floor to the public at this point. We'll have a discussion here. And I'm not sure where you guys are going with all of this, and, you know, though I appreciate the benefits of having a gun club near Sioux Falls and the services they offer to the public, I think with this limited size of this facility, we really can't be too careful, and I really encourage us not to remove a lot of these conditions that Ryan had put in here. The clarification of the hours and the range officers, to clarifying to what Ryan originally requested, I think, for what we agree upon, like having one officer for each short-range bay when shooters are present, and a range officer for the long-range bay whenever active shooters are present. I'm not sure that we wanna open up that hundred-yard bay until the baffles are installed, but I'm open to the discussion.
I would agree with what you have indicated. I also, I believe these conditions are very helpful, to have them spelled out the way Ryan has spelled them out, which is traditionally what we do for all of our permits, because it helps the owner of the permit to understand what those nuances of the, of the law might be. I would agree with you, I don't think the one hundred yard should be opened until there are baffles installed. And I understand that there's, there's costs, things associated with it, and the gun club is volunteer, and I, I don't wanna impose a financial hardship, but I think it will be a bigger financial hardship if there's an accident, so. I also think that maybe they have to think about having a volunteer sign people in, so that when there's, when there is active shooting, that the ranger is not responsible for checking people in. I think that maybe needs to be somebody who's not as highly skilled, who's interested in the sport, but could be signing people in so that that person doesn't leave the range. Wait for words, maybe come up with good ideas.
Any other comments to add to this then?
Well, I would say that I'm pretty pleased with the efforts that the gun club has made on the two ranges with the baffles, but I just don't see how those pistol bays can be made safe. And, you know, certainly, I favor people being able to shoot in this area, but I just don't see how, you know, eighteen thousand rounds in a day with excited competition going on, there's going to be bullets leaving the, leaving the area. I think that there might be some solutions, whether it's an impenetrable cloth dome-type structure, but they can't afford that, and I just don't see how we can let, you know, I was looking at the petitions from nineteen eighty-one, and they had these exact concerns at that time, and some of the names are the same on the petition that we have now. You know, I, I love to shoot my forty caliber pistol, which I don't do very often, but I just don't know how we can have that kind of exciting shooting going on. I actually think the hundred-yard range could be safely operated, but I think the excited shooting that goes on in competition, and you're going super fast trying to, you know, pump out as many rounds as you can, it just, it can't be done with the low berms that they have now and with the neighbors in that community.
Well, there's a reason for these recommendations from Ryan. Folks, safety should be a primary reason. We're talking about lives here. You know, buildings are one thing, lives are something else. And I'm not concerned about what one says about range officers should be, or what they shouldn't be, or what, what the, what the regulations are for them. They just need to be there. I'm concerned about the new range, they think they wanna open up. I think that that's a reason for us to really think this thoroughly through. Like I said, these recommendations are there for us, and Ryan's done a, I thought a pretty thorough job, but most of them.
If I might, just say one more thing. I think that some of Mr. Herrelly's revisions also made sense, I just haven't been able to read them carefully enough to see if they actually should be substituted. I'm sorry.
I guess as far as, you know, as I look at this, it gets back to what she's saying, you know, it's lethal entertainment, but it's necessary entertainment as far as, because it's also used for training people. And that's a very important part of what they do. I say, I was at this range, I was also at the one in Humboldt, just to kind of compare. And of course, the difference is, the one in Humboldt is run as a business, this one is run by volunteers, you know, very dedicated volunteers, you know, I'm sure you guys do a good job, but that's still a major difference. Because when someone owns a business, they're usually, they're there, it's their deal, they know who's responsible, it's them. Here, you've got, that's why I asked about how often their key locks are changed, 'cause like I said, when I, when you involve volunteers, you're gonna have, you know, codes get out, they just do. I mean, that's just the way it is, or somebody, a friend's gonna go do it. But it's still, I've walked around in all those bays, like I said, a hundred-yard bay did concern me, because it doesn't have the skylight, you know, you do the two hundred yard bay, that's really nice, that's just what it should be. Unless you're laying prone. And Mr. Heck said you only do the prone shooting when it's a competition or people are, the right people are their supervisor, which it has to be. But then, we're also, like I say, we're talking about a volunteer thing. If we leave the hundred-yard range open to members only, was that members only plus friends? Members only. You know, there's that type of thing. That's what makes this so hard, because, like I say, it's a necessary facility as far as I'm concerned, but it's gotta be controlled. Can't have things flying out of there. I walked around the tactical bays, and I'm thinking, this should be all right, in my view, as I look around. I'm not an expert, I don't go around doing those types of competitions. But as I'm looking at it, in my experience shooting guns, yeah, they get excited, I'm sure, but if what they say, the range officer's following the guy around as he's doing it, it should be all right. But then that's gotta be extremely supervised. And how do we, can we be assured that that is happening? I don't know. But overall, like I say, I think we've made a lot of improvements on just calling this to the unfortunate interests that they incurred, which should have never incurred. And you have to get back to that, so how can we prevent that from happening again? And a lot of this addresses that, those baffles address that, baffles on the hundred-yard would address that. And then, like I say, I have the concerns about the tactical bays, but I don't know how else you'd do that, I really don't.
I do think the increased range officer involvement on each of those pistol bays, you don't think that helps?
I think you have one in each area that's adequate.
For all five of those pistol bays?
Well, when you're standing there, you're right, looking at all five of them.
I was under the impression that, at those pistol bays, that the range officer is going with them as each shot is fired, but.
That was the impression I had.
That was for-
So then, there's a range officer with each shooter then?
That's all right.
I guess we can put one with the shooter, that would solve that, then there wouldn't be more than one shooter at a time.
But then it's problematic when they do their training. If they do, if they have everybody line up and fire their firearms all at once.
Ryan, do you have some more for us?
Okay, so, if I'm understanding your guys' question, and what the Big Sioux, how they run that range, is that if there was five shooters, there's a shooter in each one of them bays, there would be a range officer with each one of them. Correct. So if there's only one back there, they have the one range officer with that one shooter. If there's five, they're going each direction, and there's five of them, they would have five, one with each shooter. And that's why, and I think maybe they got our number, our number four, that condition, it's each active firing line, and that was one for each, and maybe you guys thought one for all the three long-range bays, however you guys would like to change that or leave that, but it's, that condition says one for each long-range bay when they're active, and then one for each shooter that is actually shooting. So if they have five bays there, I mean, so they'd have a total, if all five bays are running and all the other three, they'd have eight range officers. That's how this is written. So if that clears that up?
Thank you.
Can we add something in there too, about the range officers having to have some kind of identi, somehow to be identified, some identification?
I think that would be, I think that would be fine, just to have it in there, so if we're out there-
I mean, they say they are anyway, so it shouldn't be any hardship.
It also, it's just like saying parking or lighting or anything like that, it's just one that should, can be in there, and-
Right. Anybody willing to make a motion?
I was just gonna say, I think number four, my concern was about range officers going to check people in. When there's an active firing line, number four takes care of that. They'll be present at all times, so that really takes care of it, as long as we make that condition.
Well, and I do think that there should be no shooting from club members or the public allowed on the remaining three days. I know they wanted to strike that, but I think it should stay in there.
I don't think that's quite what it says.
It says, no, number thirteen did say no-
That's on the bays, only on the bays though, not on the long range. I just wanted to make sure that that was what you were saying.
Because they are separate, and the reason why they were separate is because after meeting with the residents, not wanting so much shooting, it to be open as many days as the three long ranges-
Well, they already said they're not open any more than that anyway, so what, why does it make a difference if we put it for the whole thing?
Because-
Maybe you could speak to that, I'm sorry, I know.
If, if you're looking up my edited version, if you changed the renumbered eight to the ranges shall not be used for more than four days per week, that would that solve it?
Yeah, yeah, and what? Taking open to the public out of there, that no one would be shooting other than four days a week, this doesn't answer my-
Public and members, I mean, you're-
Yeah, used, yeah.
Okay, 'cause we had written it so the members could shoot on a long range other days.
But they were telling us they didn't have that.
That's fine.
Nine and four days.
Not a problem, I mean, I just wanted to make sure it was all clear.
I got a question here. With the range officers, if you have one person shooting on the pistol range, you have a range officer there. Yeah, every range officer.
Yes.
One person?
Yes.
Yes.
It doesn't matter, why are you doing that? Are we ready? Is anybody ready to make a motion?
Well, it's kind of like Commissioner Bar said, it's a lot to absorb from you to change just the red.
Do we wanna defer it?
Ryan, have you looked at Mr. Herrelly's list of revisions, and do you have an opinion on them?
I did. If you just, we can, I can quickly just go over a couple of them, right, right off the bat, if you go, and I'll start at the end, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, they struck them out, saying that, you know, about the lighting, about the parking, about building permits, and about signage, right there, that's something common, we put them in with everything. And he said they only have one light, they might put up more lights later, that's why them are in there. All right, so, then I can go back to the beginning, 'cause I just wanna get rid of them, because they're very common.
So you think they're okay to get rid of, or you-
They're fine to be in there, they should be in there. It's common in any of our conditional use permits. When you look from the beginning-
What about the last one, Ryan? What about twenty, twenty-six, about that substituting those permits, do you?
Really, they're gonna be operating out of this one permit if it were to be approved, so they can just be repealed, in staff's opinion. So going, just quickly, on number one, right there, that range officer shall not be participating in any shooting activities, and shall only be there to enforce the safety rules by observing the shooters and running the firing lines and ranges. That, I don't know why that would be an issue, why somebody would strike that one out, because it's just saying, we don't want you playing around, even the NRA range book says they should be there on the firing line. Okay. If there is confusion about number four, five, and six, excuse me, four, excuse me, three, four, and five, again, they were put in there for safety concerns, and that was addressing the range officers where we want them. And I, I believe the discussion between the two is that one per shooter on all the tactical ranges and short-range bays, I think we all are in agreement, or this, us and the Big Sioux, that we want somebody there with each person that's shooting. The only difference there is that I say, and we, in our recommendation, staff says one on each of the long-range bays, the two-hundred, the hundred, and the fifty, and they have one per, one for all three. So that's the difference with them, so yes, they are, they are similar, but they are calling out different duties of the firing range, the, you know, long range and short range. Moving on to number ten, baffling of the short-range bays. It is possible, we've looked at the different ranges in Minnesota, there are examples that they are able to baffle them, is it really convenient, can it be a little bit expensive? So, no, is, you know, but that isn't us, up to us, we're putting that in there, so if there are problems, we're able to address them in the future. So I understand, I can see why maybe they would not like that, but I think it's just like in eighty-two, they put that, if it's an issue, we're gonna require baffling. So that's why we had put that in there, if it's an issue, we would continue with that. And then thirteen- That no shooting from dusk till dawn, again, that was just because we wanted it added in there, there is no shooting at dark. And if you guys kind of had, worked Smith a little differently for 12 and 13, that you wanted to combine them, the reason why we called them out, we just didn't want additional shooting, and wanted to narrow that down regardless of his members or non-members. The Department of Energy was 16 and 17, which they, they had struck out number 16. 17, they had changed, 17, I don't mind that, the changes that they made to make sure that it was taking place from authorized firing point. You know, I think either way, we're saying the same thing.
Do you think 16 needs to stay in there though, about the Department of Energy things?
Just, I talked with them and...
That's what they requested.
They said something like that would be nice. You know, are they able to prove it every single time their tower would be struck? That's not, they might not be able to do that, but it's in here saying you should not be doing that.
Correct.
So I'm confident, I know that there's a change, there's a little bit different, but a lot of them were put in there for safety, looking forward as long-range and the short-range base. Okay, one I missed here, 15, I think their concern was that we're able to open it up for review again. On staff's side is just like it was, and I'll go back to the one that was 82, if there's issues, we want to be able to bring them up. If we can't, then we're, we're putting ourselves in the same position that you wanted to add another condition, or you wanted to make a change for safety precautions, and we weren't able to do it. This way, we put that in there. I'm, I'm not sure...
Is that the same as number 10, that effect?
It is, but it's just addressing the baffling system or something, some other kind of way to contain it. You know, number 10 could be a baffling system or higher berms if you wanted to. You know, some tactical ranges have higher berms, you know, it's, it's possible that maybe that's a possibility you'd like to include.
Frangible ammunition.
I can't make a motion, can I? I am so...
If the chair would like to make a motion, I could make it for her.
That's fine, I'll wait.
Well, I could make a motion, quite, you know, and I would basically, right now, at this time, I would move for approval, with the conditions as stated.
Okay, Ryan, that Ryan just stated to us?
Yeah, I mean, it's just a lot to just clean up, and that's fine. She gets in, that's why we have that guy sitting over there looking at his computer, if you have a question, you can ask him.
You're going to add in everything you wanted to add back in and then clarify the ones that he said to clarify?
The ones Ryan said to clarify, yes.
And Ryan said to add most of those things back in.
Yes, because it does leave us open for, you got to be able to come back if there's a problem, if it happens.
Okay, so we have a motion to, with the conditions that you just stated, Ryan, adding in everything you wanted added back in and clarifying the things that you wanted clarified.
So are we changing the hours of operation? Are we putting that all four days a week, and then the one extra day between September 15th and December 1st, is that, is it all...
And no shooting on three days a week, get any?
That's for all the great short ranges, long ranges, right?
So that's the motion we have before us.
I'll second it. Did somebody second it?
No.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I haven't amended it.
Then you have to make an alternate motion, Ryan.
Ultimately, just pass this one?
Okay. You can't, I mean, you can second it, but you can't amend it.
Yes, she can.
You can?
She can second it with an amendment.
And then somebody has to second that?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to undo the vote because we didn't like her tie.
Well, she's going to make a substitute motion now, even though she's seconded, she took no vote, so she'll...
I would like to amend the use permit that the 100-yard range would remain closed until baffles are installed.
All right.
So now somebody has to second a motion?
A little discussion on that first. I would say it should be available to members only, at least, you know, strictly, you know, for, if a 100-yard use, you have to have a separate guide just for that range.
Well, you did say that though, because you said there should be a range officer on every long-range, so.
It's gone, it's gone.
So Becky, you were seconding...
She, her motion is to have it closed, and yours is to have it open with the range officer.
Well, he didn't, he didn't second it, he just made a comment, so if somebody wants to agree with Becky, they need to second.
I'll second that.
That you want it closed?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion...
You're voting on the amendment. You're just voting on that amendment.
Okay. We have a motion for that and a second for that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
I'm going to vote aye on that, to go with the 100-yard one being closed.
Okay, so now you have a new set of conditions with the requiring that it be closed, and now you need to take a total vote on all the conditions. With that change, that it would be closed until they baffle.
Okay, so we just vote, we don't have to make another motion, we just vote?
No.
Okay, all in favor of voting on all of these conditions with the 100-yard range being closed until the baffles are installed, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All, anybody opposed?
Dean.
Okay.
Is it breakfast?
Okay, that's what we passed, and it'll be on the minutes shortly, in a few days.
Well, at least a week, some long minutes is stuck.
In case you want to know exactly what we voted for, I'm sure that this has to be appealed within five days to the competition, so. Thank you, everyone, for working so hard at this.
The motion, the...
I think we still have... Sure, anyone?